Good morning. We'll call the order of this meeting on August 20th, 2019, of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call their role to establish a quorum?
Good morning. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, August 23rd, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting is also broadcast live on KUBU Radio on 96.5 FM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium and please silence your electronic devices.
Thank you. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Okay, for your consent matters, items one through 43, you are introducing an ordinance for item number six, amending Title III, Chapter 3.30, Section 3.30010 of the Sacramento County Code relating to miscellaneous finance tax collection fees. You're waiving reading and continuing to September 10th for adoption. For item seven, you're also introducing an ordinance to amend the fee structure for business licenses pursuant to the provisions of Title IV, Chapter 4.02 of the Sacramento County Code, and the ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 2.01, Section 2.01.016 relating to fictitious business name statement fees. You're waiving full reading and continuing to September 10th for adoption. Item 33, you're adopting an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 16.81, Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code relating to the North Vineyard Station Specific Plan Development Impact Fee Program 2019 update. You waived reading on that on August 6th. And then for item 34, you are -- this is to extend an interim ordinance, Section 1631 of the Sacramento County Code, to continue to declare a temporary moratorium on the cultivation of industrial hemp with the unincorporated county of the county of Sacramento, and a resolution of initiation to amend the zoning code. Those are my notes for your consent.
Thank you very much. I'd like to add that we will be holding 29 and 35 over until Supervisor Natoli has an opportunity to join us, and we'll hear those as time permits. I also have speaker slips on item number 10, so we'll take those speakers now if you'd read that into the record, please.
Item 10 is the Rio Casumnas Correctional Center Fire Alarm System Upgrade Phase Two Project bids to be received on October 3rd, 2019.
And first, we have Liz Blum. Liz, are you here? Okay. Mackenzie Wilson. Okay, there at the fire drill. Is there any other items that anybody would like off? Yes.
I want to let the record reflect that I'm recusing on item number 31 to potential conflict of interest.
Any others? I have no other speaker slips, so therefore, is there a motion on the remainder of the consent calendar? We have a motion. Chair will second. Please vote.
Ms. Peters?
I'm trying. Maybe you can do a voice vote, since my screen is not working.
We have a motion and a second for the consent calendar approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay, unanimous with those members present. And your first item is your presentation for item four?
I'm sorry, yes. I got thrown off by Ms. Peters.
Sorry, beating up the monitor.
So we just voted on item number four, which was to appoint Stephen Hartwig as the Deputy County Executive for Public Works and Infrastructure. And with that, I would like to welcome Mr. Hartwig up to the podium for what will probably be the best experience you'll ever have up there.
Thank you very much. Good morning, members of the board, members of the public, and county staff. I'm very excited and grateful about this opportunity to return to the county, especially since I grew up in the unincorporated county, went to Foothill High School, graduated from Sac State, and then began my career here at the county as an engineer. I know they say that you can't go home again because things change, but so many things are still very familiar, and so I believe that you can't go home, but you can move back into the same neighborhood. And so I'm very honored to be able to again serve the citizens of Sacramento County. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and welcome.
Thank you.
Item 44 is the presentation of resolution honoring Patty Klineknecht on the occasion of her retirement from the River District Property and Business Improvement District.
Mr. Chair and esteemed colleagues, it's my honor to stand before you this morning in front of the public to honor someone who I've had a chance to work with very closely over my tenure here at the Board of Supervisors, but has been serving the community much longer than that, and that is our dear friend Patty Klineknecht. We're honoring her on the occasion of her retirement and 14 years of service to the River District. And as many of you can attest, we cherish our P-bids here in Sacramento County. We work very closely with our business improvement districts on a daily, if not hourly, basis to ensure that the quality of life for residents and certainly the business environment for members of our business community can thrive in various commercial corridors. But I would suggest that there's more to it than that. I think there's also a very strong sense of personal investment that people like Patty put into her job. And I can tell you from my experience, again, working very closely with Patty over the years, very difficult subjects such as how best to grapple with homelessness and to be compassionate but simultaneously ensure that the impacts associated with homelessness aren't adversely affecting our business districts. She's done a wonderful job in that respect, and I know it's been frustrating at times, but I've considered her just a terrific partner, and I know that my friends on the Sacramento City Council can say the same for that partnership they've enjoyed with Patty over the years. So I'm not going to read all the "whereas's" in the resolution, but I did want to make sure that I think we should very appropriately honor her service here to Sacramento County and to the River District. Patty, thank you so much for your service. I'm going to miss you. I know you're going to stay with us in spirit, and I can only hope that whoever succeeds you in the capacity of Executive Director for the River District does half a good job as you have over the last 14 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna and members of the Board of Supervisors. This is an honor. I've been fortunate to work in a position that allows me to give back to the Sacramento community and also help shape the future of the River District. A P-bid is a public-private partnership in the truest sense of the word, and it's been an honor to include my partners and colleagues at the county as part of that partnership. I've often said that I'm a staff of one, and while the River District may just have one official employee, I'm not just one. I've counted hundreds and hundreds of people and individuals with county, with the city, with other organizations and businesses, and my board of directors that have helped me along the way. And I feel like I'm leaving the River District in a good place. There's a number of projects that are underway and in the planning. The transformation is underway. The area, which was once a very low-density, large warehouse property area, needs to be reimagined, and I challenge each of you
I know that looks
to share this vision. Yes, you said I'd be with you in spirit. I will haunt you. Yes, this is a central city community that should be a residential mixed-use area with jobs and residences and living options, and I think in the next five years, it's going to change dramatically. I look forward to seeing that, and I'll be back.
Patty? 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 Also, I just wanted to say, I had the opportunity to work with you before I was on the board when I represented some of your members, and I can say, as a member of the public and as a board member, that Phil's right as far as our P-bids are really the backbone of many of our districts, and we have a few stars that are leading those P-bids, and you are one of them. And not only that, but I will say that you probably are the biggest defender and fighter for your district of any that I've ever known, so thank you.
Item 45 is the presentation of resolution proclaiming September 2019 as the Alcohol and Drug Recovery Month.
Okay, I'm going to take a moment to take something out of order because I have been given the green light from Mr. Natoli that we can go ahead and take up item 29 and 35. Are there any questions from the board on items 29 or 35? In the public? Do we have a motion?
Some.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you. Number 45.
Okay, now we're ready for item 45, the presentation of resolution proclaiming September 2019 as Alcohol and Drug Recovery Month.
Good morning, Supervisors. Ryan Quist, Deputy Director for Health Services over Behavioral Health. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you this morning and to celebrate those in recovery and help proclaim September 2019 as Alcohol and Drug Recovery Month in Sacramento County. Sacramento County Behavioral Health Alcohol and Drug Services is also promoting the Recovery Happens Event. It's the 27th anniversary of this statewide event and rally held at the West Steps of the state Capitol on September 4th, 2019. There's going to be a recovery walk, pancake breakfast, provider fare, keynote speakers, and entertainment. This event's organized by the California Consortium of Addiction Programs and Professionals, or CCAP, to increase awareness and understanding of mental health and substance use disorders, and to honor and celebrate those in recovery. This year's theme is "Join the Voices for Recovery: Together We Are Stronger." And this event emphasizes that individuals in recovery have a greater chance of success with support systems. It's critical that people experiencing substance use disorders receive the support they need. In closing, behavioral health is essential to health, prevention, and substance use disorder treatment works. Recovery is possible, and people recover. Lori Muller now is our Alcohol and Drug Services Division Manager, and she will now introduce our guest speakers.
Thank you, Ryan.
Good morning, Supervisors. We have three testimonials this morning of individuals who are true success stories, have utilized our county service system, and are living testimony that recovery does happen and people do change their lives. I am very proud and honored this morning to introduce our guest speakers. First, you will hear from Aye Carter. She has 16 years of recovery. She has over 14 years in the substance abuse field, serving as program director at a residential treatment facility for over 13 years. She has a passion for inspiring individuals whose lives have been destroyed due to substance use disorders. She's employed with the Youthland Social Services of Northern California as a case manager to address the housing crisis in Sacramento County by assisting chronic homeless individuals to sustain permanent supportive housing and addressing the barriers associated with them being homeless. She has worked as a substance abuse counselor with Valley Recovery Home as well, empowering individuals with obtaining a solid foundation of recovery by learning how to live life without the use of alcohol and drugs. Next, you will hear from Wesley Coulter. He has 12 years in recovery. He has been a KDAC certified alcohol and drug counselor for 10 years. The first five years of his career, he served as a transitional age youth and worked with the Juvenile Drug Court here in Sacramento County, mostly because he wanted to provide the support to them he felt he didn't get at that age. His passion has always been in serving the homeless. He has served the homeless population in a variety of ways over the last 10 years, and finds his current position working for Sacramento Cover to be the most fulfilling. He is currently assisting individuals experiencing homelessness to navigate their healthcare plans. And lastly, you will hear from Cynthia Giddings. She has 11 years recovery. She's an alcohol and drug counselor with Cora Medical Clinic. She has a passion for working in the substance abuse arena and is a strong advocate for medication-assisted treatment. She has found her niche working with pregnant women and helping to facilitate change. So I'd like to invite Aye Carter up to the podium.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. It's such an honor to be able to speak. I'm very short, so I'm going to pull this down. It's an honor to be able to speak before you today. As prior introduced, my name is Aye Carter, and today I want to share with you a story about a young girl who was introduced to crack cocaine at the age of 19, surely after losing her mother to alcoholism when she was 16. Over the course of 34 years, she struggled with her addiction. When she would skip school, when she was initially introduced to substance use, she started drinking and smoking weed during high school. She would skip school to avoid her life's problems at home. She wanted to feel like she belonged. After her introduction to crack cocaine, she became numb to what was going on around her. She placed her drug use above everything, including her infant son. Crack cocaine introduced her to criminal activity, which included prostitution, receiving stolen property, petty theft, DUIs, and a CPS case. As her life spiraled out of control, she became homeless, resulting in brutal beatings and sexual assaults. She came to the conclusion that if something didn't change, she would be dead within a year. In January of 2003, she walked into the system of care on Broadway, feeling hopeless and in despair. She was placed on the waitlist and was required to check in daily to the program that was chosen for her. Her day would finally come on April 18th, 2003. She arrived physically, mentally, and emotionally broken. This was her last hope. Each of the 90 days she spent in treatment, she began to build confidence, strength, and most importantly, a desire to live again. If it had not been for treatment, she would be dead. She was able to build a solid foundation of recovery, and 16 years later, that woman stands before you now as a certified drug and alcohol counselor, a DUI instructor, a homeowner with a credit score of 750, and a certificate of rehabilitation from the state of California. But my biggest success has been inspiring others who struggle with the disease of addiction. My resume entails 13 years' experience as a program director at a residential treatment program. I worked as an instructor for CCAP. I was featured in the Sacramento News &amp; Review, which I have here, if you care to see it. I also was in a newsletter for Kaiser, because I quit smoking in 2015. Since 2003, my life has changed drastically. I am not the same woman that entered into treatment 16 years ago. Recovery has provided me with an opportunity to become the woman I've always envisioned. Recovery has allowed me to evolve by maintaining a spiritual balance. It would not be possible if it wasn't for God, the system of care, and an opportunity for treatment. I want to take this opportunity just to thank you for allowing me to share a piece of my story with you.
Thank you so much for being here today, and I have to say that I speak, I'm sure, on behalf of all of us to say how impressed and in awe we are of your accomplishments, your determination, and especially your credit score. Thank you.
Good morning, and thanks for having us. I don't need the microphone.
Are you sure?
Oh, I'm positive. My name is Wes Coulter. I've been a Sacramento County resident for 41 years. My drug of choice that I was introduced to at the ripe old age of 12 was methamphetamine. I was a runaway in the streets at the age of 12, and I found myself in a drug house Easter vacation of 7th grade. And the responsible adults in that house, who had very little food, had a dozen of eggs and one bag of potatoes, in their minds, it was a good idea to feed the smaller kids, which were about five and six, those eggs and potatoes over that week. And the three older kids, which was myself, another 12-year-old, and another 13-year-old, they put the methamphetamine pipe to our mouths, lit it up, and told us to inhale. And that was my introduction to drugs. I can tell you that I was hooked from that point on. I had some childhood trauma that had happened to me prior to that, so I was kind of groomed for the alcohol and drugs. And I turned 18 on home arrest, 19 in the county jail, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24 in prison, 25 chronically homeless and free on the street, 26, 27, and 28 in prison as well. And that was the point where I started to really think about and examine why I used alcohol and drugs in the first place, and this is what I determined. Cannabis isn't a gateway drug. Alcohol isn't a gateway drug. Nicotine isn't a gateway drug, and caffeine isn't a gateway drug. Trauma is the gateway. Childhood abuse is the gateway. Molestation is the gateway. Neglect, it is the gateway. Drug abuse, violent behavior, hypersexuality, and self-harm are often symptoms, but not the cause of much bigger issues. And it almost always stems from a childhood filled with trauma, absent parents, and an abusive family. But most people are too busy laughing at the homeless and drug addicts to realize that your own children could be in their shoes in 15 years. Sorry, I'm shaking.
No, you're doing great. Thank you.
I was released from prison for the last time on April 30th in 2007. My sobriety date is February 5th, 2007. And I really just want to stand before you today and make an amends to Sacramento County for all the harm that I did in my addiction, but also thank you for the variety of services that the City of Sacramento and the County of Sacramento offer. For me, it took every single piece. They talk about it takes a village to raise a child. Well, for me, it took every aspect. It took the Superior Court. It took the county jail. It took probation. It took state incarceration. It took parole. It took the county AOD services, system of care, outpatient, residential, aftercare, behavioral health services. What I didn't know was I was undiagnosed and untreated with mental health. I've been diagnosed with PTSD, social anxiety, and panic disorder. Today, I'm a college graduate. Today, I'm a father to my children. Today, I'm an actual member of society. I've been an alcohol and drug counselor for 10 years, but my heart really is with the homeless. I helped start Street Soccer USA in Sacramento about 10 years ago. I work with the Mayor's Program, the City of Sacramento's Pathways Initiative, in homelessness, targeting folks who have chronic health conditions and are currently homeless. And there's a lot of talk about Broadway next corridor and the people that are in their addiction in that area. I promise you, my addiction was 10 times worse than those people. I just want to say today, thank you for providing the services in Sacramento County so people like me can have a chance. I know without a shadow of a doubt that I will never go to prison again, not from an egotistical point of view. I just stand upon the promises of recovery and do on a daily basis what's required, so... There's been a lot of talk about cutting transitional living, that kind of stuff. I would just encourage you guys to continue offering a variety of different services because for me, I touched every single different service, and that's what has helped me become a productive member of society. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Cindy Giddings, and I'm a grateful recovering alcoholic and addict. My sobriety date is December 15th, 2007, and when I was in kindergarten, I did not raise my hand when my kindergarten teacher asked me, "What do you want to be when you grow up?" I did not raise my hand and say, "I want to be an addict," but that's what happened. I would like to say I could blame it on a dysfunctional family or not being loved, but that's not the truth. The truth is, is I had two families that loved me dearly. There was something wrong with me inside. I never felt comfortable. I felt different. I never felt like anybody else. And I tried alcohol, and alcohol turned me into Barbie. It made me feel wonderful and all that, you know, all that self-consciousness, the gap between my teeth, my weight, my whole entire life, I was told, "Cindy, you should lose weight now. It's harder to lose weight when you become an adult." So I grew up, at the age of three and on, thinking, "I'm fat, and I'm not like everybody else." I started cutting school. I found my niche with the bad people, drugs and alcohol. Methamphetamine quickly became my drug of choice. I'm a high school dropout. I completed 9th grade. I couch-surfed from 9th grade on, just wherever anybody would let me stay, and I started getting into a little bit of trouble, but I curved it back. I sought comfort in all the wrong people, men older than me. My addiction just, it was out of control. I lived to party, and that's all I did. And I had a couple kids, and at some point, so I had a child and moved up to Sacramento to get away from all the addicts. I grew up in the Bay Area, but I'm a magnet for those kind of people. They just like, I can spot them, find them. And I met a man. I had two children, and I actually stopped doing drugs when I got pregnant because I wanted to have healthy kids. I could stop. My addiction wasn't that bad yet. I got a job at Golden One Credit Union, had my job for seven years, and my addiction came back, and it came back tenfold. I lost my kids to CPS. I couldn't stop using drugs to keep my kids from CPS. I didn't see that I had a problem. How can you tell me that I'm a bad mom? I'm a success story. I got off welfare. I was working, all this stuff, and there was still something wrong inside here. Not saying that I didn't love my kids, because I loved my kids dearly, but they, unfortunately, they were no comparison to that drug, that euphoria that that drug gave to me. And so I am not proud to say, but my kids were without me for seven years. And while I wish that I could take away the pain and the discomfort and that feeling of loss and abandonment that they went through, I would not be the person that stands before you today if my path had been any different. So I was, around the age of 30, 35, I started getting in trouble. I started going to jail. I never thought I'd be in jail. Jail sucked, but it became normal, and I was going over and over again. I was homeless, living in bushes, digging out of dumpsters. That was not, I lost everything, my house, my job of seven years, my kids, my dignity, and I owe it all to Judge Ransom in Prop 36. Prop 36 Gateway Recovery House for Women and Alcoholics Anonymous saved my life. I didn't know I wanted recovery. Every time I went to jail, I prayed to the God I didn't believe in, just help me stay sober. And I had every intent to not use when I got out of jail, but the second I got out of jail, that was the first thing I did. So finally, I was looking at prison. I was offered Prop 36. I was told there was a, I remember going to the probation department on East Street, and for the first time in my life, I was honest. And the lady there, she's like, "Well, where do you live?" And I'm like, "Well, I'm homeless." And she was like, "What do you mean, you're homeless? You don't look homeless." And I was like, "What does homeless look like?" I had been out of jail for five days, hadn't been to sleep yet, and here I'm signing up for this Prop 36 program. And I remember crying, and him telling me, then I met with this other guy, and he said, "I think you need residential treatment." I was honest. I was using over a gram a day. And I cried and go, "I do too." And I was scared. I didn't know what was going to happen. Truth of the matter, in my thought, my life was going to be over because I'm going into treatment, and I can never use drugs or alcohol again, which give me, make me somebody else, somebody that I like, because I didn't like me. So I went into residential treatment, and I went in with the thought of faking it till I make it, letting Judge Ransom think I made it. I was going to get high as soon as I completed this program. And something happened while I was in there that, you know, that spiritual awakening, something happened, and I was enjoying treatment. I talked to my kids for the first time in seven years, and I knew at that moment I was right where I was supposed to be. And so I stand before you with almost 12 years of recovery. I have completely changed my life. I'm a mother. I'm a wife. I have eight grandkids that never have to see me loaded. Unfortunately, my son is sitting in RCCC, struggling with his own addiction, but I'm there for him when he's ready, you know? I was told there was a, I remember going to the probation department on East Street, and for the first time in my life, I was honest. And the lady there, she's like, "Well, where do you live?" And I'm like, "Well, I'm homeless." And she was like, "What do you mean, you're homeless? You don't look homeless." And I was like, "What does homeless look like?" I had been out of jail for five days, hadn't been to sleep yet, and here I'm signing up for this Prop 36 program. And I remember crying, and him telling me, then I met with this other guy, and he said, "I think you need residential treatment." I was honest, I was using over a gram a day. And I cried and go, "I do too." And I was scared, I didn't know what was going to happen. Truth of the matter, in my thought, my life was going to be over because I'm going into treatment, and I can never use drugs or alcohol again, which give me, make me somebody else, somebody that I like, because I didn't like me. So I went into residential treatment, and I went in with the thought of faking it till I make it, faking, letting Judge Ransom think I made it. I was going to get high as soon as I completed this program. And something happened while I was in there that, you know, that spiritual awakening, something happened, and I was enjoying treatment. I talked to my kids for the first time in seven years, and I knew at that moment I was right where I was supposed to be. And so, I stand before you with almost 12 years of recovery. I have completely changed my life. I'm a mother, I'm a wife, I have eight grandkids that never have to see me loaded. Unfortunately, my son is sitting in RCCC, struggling with his own addiction, but I'm there for him when he's ready, you know, and I can't beat his recovery. I decided to go back to school, and for the last 10 years, from 2008 to 2018, I worked all the way up to my master's degree in social work, and that is a huge accomplishment for me. And most recently, I've decided to go for my LCSW, so when I finish here, I'll go across the street and pick up my certified court documents from all my arrests, and get two character references, and send my application in. You know, I work for Core Medical Clinic, we just opened a new location in West Sacramento. I'm an advocate for medically assisted treatment, and I'm also a part-time clinical supervisor for Sacramento Recovery House. And I have a passion for working with people. Sacramento has some great services, but there's not enough. Wes talked about transitional housing. We get these people, and they come through treatment, and then they have no place to go, and we're going to put them back on the streets. And that's what we really need. We need more programs for drug and alcohol services. My name is Cindy, thank you.
Hi. Good morning, Chair Supervisors. My name is Sheri Daly, I'm with the California Consortium of Addiction Programs and Professionals. We represent over 20,000 addiction-focused professionals in the state, over 500 organizations and sober livings in the state, and our national affiliate of Faces and Voices of Recovery. We're here today to accept the award, which will be proudly displayed at our Recovery Happens event on September 4th. And I just want to say, the reason we're talking about recovery is because people believe that when a person goes away to treatment for 30 days, or receives some medication to an antagonist against the drug that they are using, the public thinks that they're cured, they're ready to go back into society. But what we really need is people within the society to accept people in recovery. And I'll say this twice, the opposite of addiction is not sobriety, it's connection. And recovery is all about connection. It's about when you drive by and you see homeless people, and you pride yourself because you don't yell, "Get a job." It's more than that. It's when you're an employer, and you see somebody with a spotty record, and you think, "Hmm, that person might be a drug addict." And you still hire them because you're willing to give them a second chance. It's about your sister-in-law, who gets out of treatment and tries to reunify with her family. Do you invite her over once a week to support her parenting and help her, or do you secretly talk to your brother and wish for a divorce? So those are the types of personal choices that we make, and that's why this resolution that you're presenting today is so important, because it recognizes that recovery is what is the long-term solution to so many problems in our county. Thank you.
So I have speaking points here that I'm just going to ignore, because there's nothing I can add to what's been said today. So I just want to say, on behalf of the county of Sacramento, thank you to C cap. You're all here today. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. If I could just offer a comment, and certainly I think your comments, as brief as they were, I think certainly, no, I think again, I think it bundled up some emotions, and certainly, as I was sitting in traffic, being frustrated this morning, it all pales by comparison when I heard Cindy and Sheri just speak. And I think that what I would just like to offer, obviously it was embodied in the resolution, but not only to compliment the good work, and I think the very important work that helps save people's lives, and to provide them with the foundation, I think Sheri talked about it, but Cindy's story, and the others that I wasn't here for, very powerful. But I guess what I would just like to comment on is that, you know, there are public resources that go into support of the various processes and programs, and a lot of times, obviously there's private dollars and resources that, you know, are even a greater portion of all that. But I think when you hear the stories, you know it's worth it. And when you hear about the families that have been restored, you hear about the lives that have been restored, and I think it's important that, certainly with the resolutions that we put forward, that make a very public statement, and certainly offer our support, that behind all those words are countless lives that have been saved, that have been turned around, and were the quality, but also, I think, the important aspects of loving one another, caring for one another, and caring for people in our community. And so, Mr. Chair, thank you again. I think your presence there made a very strong statement, and certainly I want to offer my compliments, certainly to all the folks that spoke today. That takes, you know, itself, a lot of courage, but I think sharing that story and letting people know that recovery not only happens, it works, and you're a testament to all that. So, thank you so much.
Thanks for having my back there, Supervisor.
You did good, Sheri.
Thank you. So I do want to share some thoughts. You know, this is an annual occurrence. We hear these incredible testimonials each year, and each year, I think we, all of us have the same visceral emotional reaction to a lot of things, but probably mostly the strength of the individuals, and the fact that of all the people we have a chance to interact with as politicians, and that we see in these chambers, kind of the sense of hope that gets played out in the course of recovery is just something really, something to behold and respect and understand. And so, it's always a good reminder, not just for this board, but for the public, to hear those testimonials. And what I find interesting is that the common thread, year after year, again this year, is that not only is the punchline to these stories sobriety, you know, which is to be congratulated, but it's the fact that, to a person, everyone that has gone through hell in terms of their addiction, their substance abuse disorders, gives back. They come back, they're getting their master's degrees, they're going, they're working in some capacity to help those behind them that are struggling. And so, I don't want that to be lost on any of us in terms of an important theme that we see each year, that we hear these stories, is that it's not just ending with the sobriety that we all respect and wish, you know, good thoughts, well wishes to those who have struggled so hard, but we deserve, or they deserve, an immense amount of thanks from us as local policymakers, guardians of local resources. And the public should be thanking these folks too, because they're making sure that folks, again, that are younger than them, or that have a similar struggle, have opportunities to succeed just like they do. So I just want to say, thank you.
Thank you all for being here today. Okay, next item.
Item 46 is the presentation of Broadway Sacramento's Community Night benefiting nonprofit organizations in the Sacramento region.
Mr. Butler. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Chair Kennedy, members of the board. It's nice to see all of you again. My name is Dave Butler, and I'm here this morning as a member of the Board of Directors of Broadway Sacramento, which each year produces Broadway at Music Circus and the Broadway Series at the Sacramento Community Center. And I'm joined, this year at Memorial Auditorium, by the way. I'm joined this morning by President and CEO of Broadway Sacramento, Richard Lewis, and also Shelby Oliphant from the Roberts Family Development Center, and also Adriana Martinez from La Familia. I was, so we have a little tag team presentation for you. I was drawn to serve on the board of Broadway Sacramento for a couple of reasons. One, as a Sacramentoan, have always valued the contributions that Music Circus provides to our community as a cultural institution. But also, as a board member, I'm beginning to learn more and more about the contributions that Broadway Sacramento, as a nonprofit, makes to our community, exposing the arts and performing arts and musical theater, America's true original art form, to many families and children and community members who've never experienced it before. And so, with that, I'd like to introduce Richard Lewis, President and CEO of Broadway Sacramento, who has a very brief PowerPoint presentation to tell you a little bit about Broadway Sacramento's offerings, especially those in the community. Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and the County Board of Supervisors and county staff. My name is Richard Lewis, I am President and CEO of Broadway Sacramento, Broadway on Tour, and Broadway at Music Circus. Take a moment now to look, oh, wrong speech.
You're doing pretty good there, Richard.
Yeah. Got a future in radio.
Autopilot. Oh, okay. Uh-oh, my kids aren't here. Okay, push the other one. There we go. As you can see from the bullet points there, we are the oldest professional arts organization in Sacramento, performing arts. In 1951, my father, Russell Lewis, and his partner, Howard Young, having had a recent unfortunate experience on Broadway as producers, decided to try something new and different, which was called a tune tent. And they thought that the San Fernando Valley was a terrific place to start that project. Eleanor McClatchy convinced them that Sacramento would actually turn out to be a better idea. And so, 1951 was the first music circus. As it happened, my father cast the woman who became my mother as part of that first season. My first time onstage was in 1952 as a fetus. The, it's, we are dedicated to the preservation and expansion.
I thought I recognized you.
So, Music Circus, you should know, in particular, we produce Music Circus from the ground up. Broadway on Tour, those are touring companies, they show up in anywhere from six to 20 trucks, we write a large check, and then they leave town. What we did with Shrek, Shrek existed for eight performances only, plus the one dress rehearsal that we're focused on, which is our community night. And then that's it, the cast went elsewhere. So, that's the big difference between what we do with Broadway on Tour as opposed to Broadway at Music Circus. Because we're in control of all the aspects of Broadway at Music Circus, we're able to do a lot more outreach and education events. Push the button. So you can see, we have Arts Alive, we have our Assisted Arts Programs, we're doing, not ju, we've been doing sign language since the 80s, but we have expanded to include open caption, and also now audio-described performances. We do workshops for folks in the community. If we can work with them and get them to understand what it means to audition at a professional level, it will increase our ability to include more local people in our shows. Most of the cast is from New York, which is the heart of our industry. Camp Music Circus for kids in the summertime, it's a great way to expose them to the arts. And then we also have our Broadway at Music Circus Community Night, which is, again, the night that we're focused on. You can see, we have internship programs, master classes. We do, we do a lot. I'm reminded. Okay, so, thanks to our Board of Directors, we created, actually, a couple of years back, we called it Be Our Guest. The first show was Beauty and the Beast. And since that was such a success with the community, we decided to expand that, so we refer to it now as Community Night, excuse me. And Josh Hart, on our Board of Directors, is Chair of the Community Night Committee, and did a terrific job helping us organize and get the tickets distributed. You can see, it is an opportunity for folks that would not get to the theater to experience live theater. Our Monday night dress rehearsals, at this point, are full bore performances, complete with orchestra, and we're not allowed to charge money for it, so we don't. For the folks that came, we invited the different groups that we invited, it was about 19 area organizations, we gave away about 2,000 seats. Our facility seats about 2,200 people. But in addition to the items, the popcorn, and yes, we did the family-friendly show, but we also created a study guide, which you have copies of available to you. And you can see, thank you to Commerce Printing, you know, we're a nonprofit, so that's, you do a lot of that kind of bargaining, shall we say. Parking, we also provided parking, that didn't make it in here. So we cut a deal with the city, and so we got validated parking so that folks would have a means of getting here. Getting people to the theater can sometimes be really tricky. You know, if they have to have a bus, well, that's money. Then, after that, really, do you have any questions for me about anything, or should we just move along here?
We will move along. Ms. Chair.
I heard that.
Richard, just, so how many participants? You know, if you count families and children and all the folks that you're able to...
We had, the, we had about 2,000 tickets that we distributed to the 19 different organizations, and I think we had attendance of around 1,500 of those individuals. And we have two of those groups here this evening, this afternoon.
That's great, thanks.
This morning. It's just odd to be here and not ask for money.
Supervisor Frost.
Hi, Richard, I just wanted to ask, who, we do have some local small theaters, and a lot of community members that love acting, so where would they go to learn more about auditioning?
They'd go to BroadwaySacramento.com, and we audition, well, we audition extensively in New York City. We also audition a little bit in Los Angeles, and then we audition here in Sacramento. And prior to the auditions in Sacramento, is when we launched the workshops, everything's at BroadwaySacramento.com.
Okay.
The next season will be announced, I think, in early November, and after that, casting information will appear on the website.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors.
Morning.
My name is Adriana Martinez, and I'm a family advocate at La Familia's Mental Health Department. La Familia Counseling Center is a nonprofit organization that's been around for about 45 years. We provide, we're located in District 2 in the South Sacramento area. We provide mental health, mental health services for families, and those services are provided through home visitations, school visitations, and other locations as requested by our families. We also have a career center, Birth and Beyond, and other enrichment programs, like karate and ongoing community events throughout the year. Most of the families that we chose to participate in the Community Night come from single-parent homes, and I would like to read some of their quotes. Okay. "I got, I told my daughters, it was a surprise. And when they realized that it was the Shrek the Musical, they got very happy. It was our first time going to a musical, and we really enjoyed it. Thank you for the tickets. My daughter was very excited and happy to have had the experience. She said her favorite thing about going to the show was having the time to spend with her mother. She said she was so excited and happy, even after the show, when she got home. She said that the show put her in such a good mood that she did everything that my mom told me to do, even my chores. Mom also expressed how it was a great time with her daughter, and that the show was a very beautiful experience. It was a lot of fun. My daughter had a good time, I was able to laugh a lot. I was really happy that her and I got some bonding time. I rarely take my kids to events like this. It was my kid's first time attending a musical. They had a great time, we laughed so much. It was my son's birthday the following day, and it was the perfect event to celebrate his birthday. He really loved it. Thank you for thinking of us." So, everyone had a wonderful time, and it really gave them the opportunity to bond as a family. So, thank you Supervisor Kennedy for nominating La Familia to participate in Community Night.
Just to correct you, La Familia is located in District 1.
District 1, sorry.
Well, Maple, Maple's in...
Maple, we have two locations.
Hi, good morning. My name is Shelby Oliphant from the Roberts Family Development Center. I'm a site coordinator at our main center location on Doreena Avenue, and we participated in the Community Night as well. And I just think that the biggest takeaway for me was having one of my students, who is normally a hip-hop dancer, say, "You know, Ms. Oliphant? You know, I normally do hip-hop dance, but I think I'm so animated that I could probably act and be in a musical." And so, just hearing that alone was just kind of like, wow, you know, the opportunities that sometimes we don't always necessarily get to provide our students, to have...
So everyone had a wonderful time, and it really gave them the opportunity to bond as a family. So thank you Supervisor Kennedy for nominating La Familia to participate in Community Night.
Just to correct you, La Familia is located in District 1.
District 1, sorry.
Well, Maple's in—
Maple, we have two locations.
Hi, good morning. My name is Shelby Oliphant from the Roberts Family Development Center. I'm a site coordinator at our main center location on Doreena Avenue, and we participated in the Community Night as well. And I just think that the biggest takeaway for me was having one of my students, who is normally a hip-hop dancer, say, "You know, Ms. Oliphant? You know, I normally do hip-hop dance, but I think I'm so animated that I could probably act and be in a musical." And so just hearing that alone was just kind of like, wow! You know, the opportunities that sometimes we don't always necessarily get to provide our students, to have something like this come into their lives and really have them kind of think differently about the different ways that they might want to express themselves is amazing. And so I really appreciate this opportunity to be able to take my students. You know, I had a lot of fun. Most of them were really excited about popcorn. I don't know, I'd guess that's a big thing with elementary school students. So they were really excited, and it was just something that I also enjoyed myself, being in—seeing a story that I literally watched growing up come to life was amazing, so really appreciate the opportunity.
Great.
So just—to amplify some of the comments Shelby and Adriana made, one of our objectives as a Board of Directors is to increase the exposure of Broadway Sacramento to business and civic groups throughout the region. One of the things that we chose to do was to invite a set of elected officials to nominate nonprofits to participate in Community Night. So we asked Chair Kennedy, as Chair of the Board of Supervisors, to nominate a group, and he chose La Familia. And we asked Supervisor Serna, who represents the Wells Fargo Pavilion, to nominate an organization. He chose the Roberts Family Development Center. So we're both grateful to you for choosing to engage in our work this way and look forward to doing this for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you for the program and for everything that you do throughout the year in the community, Mr. Lewis, as well. So, thank you.
And he lives in District 3.
Okay.
Just saying.
Yes, thank you Supervisor Peters. Also, by the way, to the Board is thank you very much for helping us to actually finance the construction of the Wells Fargo Pavilion, as well as the complete and total renovation of the Sacramento Theater Company. It was a very bold move on your part, but I knew that it would turn out right because I'm so pretty.
Very good, Richard.
Thank you so much for being here.
And you might just find Shrek wandering countryside out in District 5 somewhere, so...
Item 47 is the Child Protective Services Oversight Committee's 2018 Annual Report.
How do we turn the slides on?
There you go.
Magic. Members of the Board of Supervisors, good morning. Thank you for having us, and we're honored to be here today. My name is Maynard Johnson, retired pediatrician, and with me is Chris Orr from the District Attorney's Office. We're both members of the Oversight Committee, and we're also on the Critical Incident Subcommittee of that organization. Let's see. Oops, there we go. Some history, brief. We were established in 1996 by the Board of Supervisors, and it was initially called the Critical Case Investigation Committee. It came about as a result of one particular case. It provides child protective systems oversight, not just Child Protective Services Division, CPS oversight, and it's a committee of the Children's Coalition. Today, we will discuss the Oversight Committee's 2018 Annual Report. The Oversight Committee focuses on agencies within our community that play a role in ensuring the safety of children. It's a multi-agency collaboration—well, multi-agency collaboration is an essential component of child protection in order to form a stronger safety net for vulnerable children. This year's report continues this focus. In an effort to help increase collaboration between systems serving children and to become more familiar with the services available, the Oversight Committee invites to its meetings community agencies charged with ensuring child safety, providing resources or services that contribute to improving the health and well-being of children and families in the community. In 2018, we began inviting local law enforcement agencies to share how they respond to reports of suspected child abuse and their average case levels in specific types of child abuse cases, and engage in conversation with the committee about suspected child abuse reporting in general and opportunities for collaboration. We hope these conversations will contribute to building a stronger safety net for children in Sacramento. In a moment, Mr. Orr will discuss what we have observed through our reviews of CPS critical incidents. This year's report shows that things appear to be improving, as there is less to discuss than in previous years. However, more data and observations and future reports will determine if this is a continuing trend.
Good morning again. My name is Chris Orr. I'll come up for the hire. And I'm on the Oversight Committee also. I work at the Sacramento District Attorney's Office. We'll be discussing now the Critical Incident Subcommittee Report. The Critical Incident Subcommittee is comprised of community stakeholders, professionals in the field, and family services—in the areas of family services and child protection. Over a span of roughly two years, we reviewed five cases that occurred in Sacramento County wherein maltreatment, child fatality or near fatality were directly related to child abuse or neglect, and the family had a CPS history. The purpose of these reviews is to identify cross-systems issues to improve outcomes for children, which child protective system partners may learn to improve practices and avoid repeat mistakes of the past. The following observations were made by the committee in the review of these five cases. These observations were similar to what we've observed in prior years. We do believe there has been a little bit of a decrease, but again, as Dr. Johnson indicated, we're not sure if that's a one-year blip or a trend downward. So when we look at talking point number—the initial area there, number one, lack of critical thinking when making judgments about how to treat cases. We observed there were some instances where CPS workers and supervisors did not appear to use information contained in previous referrals. In addition, at times, it appeared that information received from parents was not verified, even though it contradicted information received from mandated reporters. In some instances, as we look at the instances regarding medically fragile children, we observed that medically fragile children were not always assigned to be served by a public health nurse. In some of these cases, the children's medical issues were not properly addressed. Public health nurses could have helped social workers make better assessments and facilitate communication with medical providers. We only had two cases that involved medically fragile children of our five, but we did make those observations in some of those cases. Number three, impacts of drug use in the home environment, including legal drugs. Mental health concerns and domestic violence were not always given appropriate weight in the assessments. There were cases where children were adversely affected by parental drug use. Follow-up drug testing compliance may happen when it's court-ordered. However, there's no legal mechanism to issue consequences for parental drug use without court intervention, creating little incentive for parents to quit drug use, which is a risk factor, I think, as described by some of your earlier presenters, among child deaths. Lack of adequate safety plans is something we've seen in the past, and we saw again in our five cases that we reviewed. The committee saw cases where safety plans were assigned actions or activities to family members who were not appropriate to handle such responsibilities. This is something we've seen in the past. We are, again, seeing hopefully a trend going down, but it is something that we think that the CPS does need to continue to work on. Lack of follow-up to verify whether or not parents have completed the recommended trainings or to take advantage of offered referral services. Families are referred to new services, do not always receive what's a warm handoff, or there's no follow-up to ensure that they actually were connected to their services. For example, mental health services, drug and alcohol services, or domestic violence services, which would support the welfare and safety of the children in their home. These situations occur where CPS isn't necessarily going to open a case. They refer someone to a service, and they have to close their case, their referral, within their 30 days, and we're unsure if the parents go and make use of that service. And so there's been a referral, though—I think they're trying to struggle for a warm handoff, where they actually make sure that the person is connected with that service, and then there's some follow-up with that service to make sure that the parents are actually going to it. Even if they can't legally hold them to it, it should send a red flag back up if they were referred to a service, they didn't go to that service, so that CPS can now can re-look into that family's life. Lack of follow-up to—pardon me—for 10-day responses. Face-to-face contacts did not always occur within this timeframe. Since the committee saw this in some of the cases we reviewed, we suggested that CPS conduct an analysis to determine how many 10-day response investigations currently have a face-to-face communication within 10 days and what barriers might be impeding that. In closing, as it relates to the Critical Incident Subcommittee Report, we recognize and appreciate the work that CPS social workers do, and that human error can and will always be present. We do believe that CPS is an organization that, over time, has been working to improve and strive and become a learning organization. They've been very helpful as it relates to our Subcommittee and providing information, sending someone there to fill us in on what's going on, and we feel very candid in talking about the errors that they've had and the ways that they're trying to improve it. In working with CPS and its internal reviews, we've noticed that CPS is working to critically assess their operations and develop a willingness to make changes and continually assess the effectiveness of those changes.
Supervisor Nutoli?
Yeah, I didn't want to interrupt or flow your presentation, but just—so the five cases you reviewed obviously then tie directly to some of your assessment, and obviously the findings and recommendations. The five cases, though, none of those resulted in a child death?
Some of those were child deaths.
They were child deaths, which—
Some of them were. I don't have the exact number of that. I could get that for you, but—
Okay. That would be useful, but maybe in my reading of the report, I didn't see—it just talks about the five cases. It didn't get into all the specifics.
So, critical incidents, and critical incidents are defined as deaths or near deaths.
Right.
So, most of them are deaths, but there are some that are near deaths, wind up in the ICU, have severe injuries, et cetera. So that—it's a serious case, not just a—
No, I understand. I mean, I just—but there should be somewhere, and maybe it is in the text, I just read it over the top of it, but—you know, your definition, obviously, of critical incidents, as you pointed it out, and that it doesn't necessarily result in the death, but it's a near—and I think, again, because that's the seriousness by which you're, you know, then making judgments regarding, you know, the facts, as you're able to ascertain them in those cases, and then your analysis with the committee. So it would just be helpful. Otherwise, the reason is just, well, there were five cases reviewed, there were critical incidents. No, these were young children, children, infants that perished in some cases, and some nearly, and this is why we're, you know, doing this assessment, to your point about the history. And so I would hope that our report doesn't get so dry, that doesn't actually take in—because you are looking at the human factor, and then looking for improvement and working with those who are, you know, the guardians and the interveners in these situations. So I would just—again, maybe that's just a friendly suggestion for—as you characterize this in, you know, future reports, that without, you know, breaching any confidentiality—I get all that, you don't want to get—but I think the cases in—at least maybe just a very, you know, small snippet about what those cases involve.
Sure. Thank you. Well noted.
Thanks, Mayor.
As a result of the observations documented in this report, the Oversight Committee recommends the following. Continue to ensure that CPS social workers receive ongoing critical thinking, training, and supervisor coaching to ensure the information gained, especially from case discussion trainings, is applied in their investigations of child abuse, neglect, and/or deaths of children. Continue to ensure that all social workers are adequately trained to assess the impact of parental drug use, including marijuana and other legal drugs, on children in the home, and that supervisors provide coaching to ensure that drug use in the home environment is given appropriate weight in the safety plans. In assessing parents and family situations for neglect and/or abuse, based on our review, more emphasis should be placed on interviewing all collateral contacts and verifying their concerns to ensure the safety and well-being of the children. Continue to increase the number of public health nurses available to social workers working in the CPS Emergency Response Division. Strengthen the partnership between CPS social workers and public health nurses to ensure all identified medically fragile children receive a holistic evaluation. That CPS continues to evaluate and reduce caseloads in order to be consistent with best practices, conforming to the Child Welfare League of America, CWLA, caseload standards, and seek Board of Supervisors' support in adding more social workers in the CPS workforce if CPS deems it necessary. The average assignment of a new—of new investigations to emergency response social workers is 13 to 16 per month, and go into more detail in Appendix A on page 14. This is in addition to cases still open from previous months for investigations, engagements with family, or referral for services. Large caseloads and excessive workloads can make it difficult for social workers to serve families effectively. Administrative requirements for each case are on the increase. The complex cases require intensive interventions, which further add to the caseload workloads. Manageable caseloads and workloads can make a real difference in a worker's ability to engage families, deliver quality services, stay with the agency, and ultimately achieve positive outcomes for children and families. We, through the County—Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, have worked hard over the years to increase support for CPS, which the committee feels has led to the positive outcomes that are alluded to here today. Hence, we are very concerned about the proposed cuts to the budget of child protective services and the effects that these cuts may have in the lives of children here in Sacramento County.
Okay, I'm going to interrupt you there for a moment. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. If you can go back to the previous slide, please. So with regard to recommendation number two, my question is, when does—the responsibility to assess versus actually doing something? Where is that threshold when it comes to understanding the level of drug and the type of drug abuse that might be occurring in a home? In other words, this—I mean, the operative verb here is "to assess," but when does it become something more in terms of a meth pipe, you know, laying out on the table, or, you know, when it—something that's pretty serious, at least in my mind? I don't know, because I don't do this, but I'm asking you, what—when does that—what is the threshold?
Well, I don't think I'd be qualified to answer that question, because we have training, and you can—Michelle Cahias is here today. We could maybe ask her that question.
We'll have an opportunity.
But I— We just got done hearing from people that were—became addicted to methamphetamine when they were 12 years old.
Right.
I'd really like an answer.
He might know the answer there.
I'll chip in a little bit. So, in my view, the cases we see all have—not all have—lot of these cases, not just this year, but over— of these cases, not just this year, but over the multi-year span, drugs are an issue. And CPS is in a difficult spot. Spot's getting more difficult as time goes on, when we legalize marijuana, and they go into a home, and there's marijuana in the home, there's grow rooms in the home, and there's a legal right for them to have those, yet, how does that affect children? When there's parents that, you know, potentially have drug issues, does that mean the child should instantly be removed? Not necessarily, but it certainly should be a red flag factor that should be highlighted. So, I think they're in a very difficult spot, but they have to, to make this determination. And I think the CPS Oversight Committee would probably like to lean more on the side of when you see drugs in the home, you see potential use, that you, you know, maybe more, more guarded at removing those children. They're, obviously, have that dual mandate of having to try to keep the children in the home with the parents, and can they get those parents services in order to keep the children and parent united. I think it's a very difficult balance, and hopefully, Mr. Caheas can talk about the training they do.
Yeah, so, no, I appreciate that, but I'm going to look for a more detailed explanation when, when and if Michelle comes to the microphone, because to me, there's a, there's a huge difference between a joint laying out on the table and a meth pipe laying out on the table.
So, so, the, the idea is that if, just because marijuana and alcohol are legal, doesn't mean that you just ignore it when you're making an evaluation. So, in the past, it's been kind of, if a mother had one of those cards in the past, when they used to get a card, and it made it legal to have marijuana, it was tend to not take it as seriously as they should. But it just means that you just ask a couple extra questions, instead of just ignoring it, because they have marijuana. Because kids can get into marijuana, and they can get into the butts of the marijuana cigarettes, and so on and so forth. So, so, it just means that if you come across it, that you ask some more questions, and you just kind of keep your ears open.
No, I get that, I get, my, my inquiry really has to do with, when does a CPS social worker that's doing a visit, and they see something that is so acute in terms of someone's addiction, is something that, quite frankly, is going to be much more impactful to the adverse consequence to the, the living condition for the child, namely, something more than marijuana and alcohol? And I'm not, I don't mean to minimize that, I get that, but there's a huge difference in my estimation between heroin and, and, you know, the harder drugs, psychedelics, and, and especially methamphetamine, than there is the legal.
Well, an example is maternal drug abuse. It's taking, it's taken a lot more seriously when the drugs of abuse are cocaine or methamphetamine, much more acute than if they're, they test positive for marijuana. So, it's, it's a significant event if a mother is positive for cocaine or marijuana, or methamphetamine during her pregnancy than if it's marijuana.
Supervisor Nattoli?
Yeah, just to build on that, and, and I wanted to ask about the, the same reference here, but I was going back to the language that was in the report on page seven of 18 that relates to number two here, and it says, that bullet point, as you related earlier, impacts of drug abuse, mental health issues, and domestic violence on the child's safety, and these are the cases you reviewed, were understated regarding their importance. And that really garnered my attention, and I think certainly Mayor and you, Chris, both kind of referred to, we'll hear from Michelle. But then, as I read, you know, reading ahead to Michelle's presentation on behalf of the department, and I think certainly, you know, bridging off of Supervisor Serna's comments, that I think that, you know, when the committee, you folks who reviewed it, say that they're understated in these cases, or some, if not all, then, and then I see the response, which is, you know, we're doing as much as the law allows and so forth, and recognizing it is a lot for a social worker or anybody else to shoulder, when you go into somebody's home, and you're looking at the welfare of the child, and the family situation, and so forth. But if you could just, maybe, when you say it's understated, kind of what does that mean? Because, as I read back to the 2017 and 2018 reports to this board, you know, this has been a common theme, it's certainly challenging our society, as, you know, referenced in comments and some of the presentations we had earlier today. But I, you know, what, what exactly does understated mean? Does it mean that it wasn't taken into account as fully as it should have been, that it could have been a different outcome, could the child maybe have lived? Again, it leaves a lot to my imagination, I don't want to, you know, read into something that's not there, but-
Okay, so, we're just looking at these five particular cases.
Right, I get it, yeah.
And in these cases, we found that the domestic violence, drugs, and alcohol, and-
Mental health.
Mental health issues were just not appreciated as, as significant factors as they are. And, and this was in these particular cases, not all of them, but most of them, I would say that that was the case. We've seen that thread of drug and alcohol, not, not following up on testing, not referring, not making sure they're sticking to a request that was made, and appreciating really how significant these issues are. That's, and there's been a huge improvement, and training's improved dramatically over the years, but it still rears its head here in these cases every now and then, and has so, done so for the last several years. And then, I would just discuss the case yesterday, which these issues are there in this upcoming case that we're just reviewing, actually, yesterday. So, it's a, it's an area that just has to be stressed and pushed, and, and made, you know, right at the top of the list when they're doing their evaluations. And I think people are tending to get the message, when you say, Chris.
Yeah, I think you might see examples where someone has a drug history, repeated drug history, they're doing more erratic behavior. One of the CPS workers doing an evaluation, how do they consider that past drug history? Maybe they're not under the influence on the exact occasion when the CPS worker's there, but they have this past drug history. Maybe they've not done their referrals in the past, or they have done them, but now they have some new erratic behavior. The prior stuff isn't what, what killed the child, or put the child in a critically bad incident, but when the CPS worker's deciding, should this child stay in this home on this future occasion? It's part of that looking in the past, deciding whether this appropriate home is appropriate right now. And if they have a past drug history, does maybe this current conduct is linkable to drugs right now? And, and they have to, obviously, have grounds for removing the child, and that's part of our suggestion of considering the whole background, going and having a good system where you can go back and look at the entire background of an individual in making those determinations. Because I think the problem's personally going to get a little bit worse, because with Prop 47, we've made all the serious drugs you all are talking about into misdemeanors.
Right.
And so, there's not going to be a lot of criminal consequences, which means you have more people potentially on them, and CPS having a much more difficult time with those issues.
Chris, and Mayor, thanks for responding. I guess I would just offer, and again, I don't expect, you know, Michelle or anybody else to necessarily respond today, but it seems to me that with some of the dollars that flowed to the county for mental health, certainly, you know, for situations involved with domestic violence, obviously, a drug and alcohol abuse, again, you put a lot of, on the shoulders of the social worker or the supervisors, and it seemed to me that maybe we need, as we look at our tier decision-making, but also, to the points that are being made here, and I bring some kind of directness to you, I guess, in my comments, is that maybe some additional either resources, or within the department, obviously, with the support they receive, you know, with some of the, you know, teaming up on some of these, that if there are, you know, some of the things that have just been, and these are, you know, kind of hard specifics as relates that if there's been this history, and/or there's some other things observed, that again, you know, a social worker's got a large caseload, and they're trying to, you know, work with, you know, severe, or less severe, and, and, and new cases, and some, in some instances. Maybe there needs to be some real focus as to using this information as a, as a, as a learning tool, obviously, some tragic outcomes here, but to help us avoid, and I would tend to agree with what Chris just said, is that I, I don't see this situation, not because we're not intervening and responding, but I don't see it getting any, any better anytime soon, for some of the reasons you stated, and just, I think, some other societal challenges that we face. So, maybe there's a way to really focus in, not just drugs and alcohol, but the mental health and domestic violence, because when we get the child death review team, we see the domestic violence, we see the alcohol, we see the drugs, and those are fatalities. And, and, and I think that maybe this is a, a clear signal, not only that there's a problem, we know about it, but then maybe how we can support the folks that are actually doing the work, and so, the judgments may be a little different. Maybe the child ends up being removed from the home, in some cases, where in the past, because there was Prop 47 or other things that, you know, may have gotten other triggers involved, we're no longer, you know, criminalizing a lot of those activities, and certainly with mental health and domestic violence, domestic violence obviously being criminal, but with mental health, that we have some other resources available to us. I don't know, Bruce, there's something you might want to weigh in on, because obviously you have a lot of work, you've done a lot of work in this field over the years, so.
Supervisor, I would just say, and I want to give Michelle a chance to respond when it's her turn, but I can assure you that the, in the CPS world, are fully recognized, recognize the growing issues related to drug abuse and how that affects their cases. And when Michelle gives her testimony, you'll hear how they prioritize that in their training and in the review of cases. And also, I wanted to emphasize that we've established a very strong partnership between the work that CPS does and the work that we do with our behavioral health and our mental health services. Last week, for example, you saw a large presentation, how we're utilizing MHSA dollars. But I also want to make the point that was made by one of our speakers earlier this morning, and that's the impact of trauma generally. And we're doing more work, we're doing more work, we got a grant, as Supervisor Serna knows, to develop some training, additional training for workers, not just in CPS, but throughout the county, recognizing the effects of trauma and building that into our treatment strategy. So, all those things are very important, and I think Michelle will speak to that as well.
Just wanted to comment that, you know, the training is essential, but then the support behind the training, so that with large caseloads and/or difficult cases, or ones that have, you know, maybe there's some intuitive, based upon some of the facts, that, you know, that there is that level of additional support, not only for the referrals, but obviously the accountability, and to hopefully keep the child and the family as safe. And, again, I'll certainly welcome, you know, hearing from Michelle, but I, again, I just, I raised that because as we've, you know, talked about even the most recent budget times, you know, some of the constraints as it relates to our ability to provide, you know, adequate staffing in some of these cases, and that's referenced here, too. But when I hear that, you know, there's this concern about understatement, you know, kind of understating it, and we look at cases where children died, then, in my own mind, I make that linkage in the sense that, you know, if we had more available, if we could have done more, not necessarily, I'm not shelling this on social workers, but, you know, what could we have done to save a life that no longer, there's no, you know, there's no heartbeat any longer? And so, I, you know, I say that because that, to me, still goes to the essence of why we do this on an annual basis, is to try to, you know, keep children safe, and do our best, you know, to observe, certainly, not the law, but also the realm of, you know, of family units and, and all that goes with that. But the trauma, and, and again, I think that this report is important, because it highlights, you know, what we're doing well, where we, you know, where we could improve, but also, maybe, we as board supervisors, I'm going to bring this back to me in the last comment, is that where, in our analysis of priorities, not only for funding, but for programmatic support, that, you know, this needs to be in the forefront, that, you know, if we don't do as much as we can do, then children can perish. So, and you brought it up, and that's collaboration, CPS can't do this all by themselves.
It's a community problem, it's, the solution rests with the community as a whole, and they're just one part of that. And then, it was alluded to and stated, actually, the term ACEs, ACE, which is Adverse Childhood Events, they've found, and it's relatively new in the last 10 to 20 years, about how an event that happens to a child adversely affects them for the rest of their lives. And so, obesity is one sign of that. Kids that are molested have high rates of obesity, they have high rates of drug and alcohol, and cigarette smoking. So, all these things, and they become abusers as well. And so, we have to address these adverse childhood events early on and recognize it, but that's sort of off the topic, but, and now, continuing with our recommendations, we recommend that, and it was alluded to already by Mr. Orr, that conduct an analysis to determine how many CPS investigations currently have an actual face-to-face communication within 10 calendar days. And two, for the 10-day response referrals that don't have a face-to-face communication, identify and learn from the barriers that impeded timely investigation. CPS, I know, is very interested in this. Continue to ensure that ER social workers verify parent participation with service providers before closing a referral, and increase collaboration between CPS and those community providers to improve the flow of information and better support families that have CPS involvement. In other words, doing warm handoffs. And I can tell you that over the last couple of years, this idea of warm handoffs has increased dramatically, and so, there's actually, they're handing off to the people that they recommend that that person see, they're actually handing them off, all kind of integrating and being together, that's, and we want that to continue. The Board of Supervisors support the Sacramento Prevention Cabinet in its efforts to develop and implement a Sacramento child abuse prevention plan. The detail, the details that the DCFAS and CAPS shared with the committee about the newly-formed Sacramento Prevention Cabinet can be read in Appendix A, A, page 16, and Michelle Caheas will elaborate on this if need be. I think in her response, she alludes to that in a significant way. So, that's what our, and we're, we're going to be active participants in this Sacramento Prevention Cabinet. All right, Chris?
And I'll be discussing our work plan for 2019. We're going to continue to review the Critical Incident, Critical Child Protective Services cases, the Critical Incident cases I've already talked about, and we can maybe try to get more details to you in a way that complies with confidentiality next year, taking those recommendations in mind. We're going to continue to conduct research on the organizations within the child welfare system. We're going to collaborate with the Sacramento Prevention Cabinet in the development implementation of the Sacramento Child Abuse Prevention Plan. And really, the big thing that we've been working on for about a year and a half now is we're reviewing child abuse case levels of local law enforcement agencies, and learn ways the committee can assist these agencies in their efforts to advocate for children their needs. So, in past years, we focused solely on CPS. We've been spending about a year and a half now, having each of the agencies, the Sacramento Sheriff's Department, the Police Department, GALT, Citrus Heights, Folsom, have their law enforcement officers come down to our committee, talk to us about the levels of detectives they have involved, the number of suspected child abuse reports they're receiving, whether they're able to adequately address those. We're going to be able to present to you next year, information about the difficulty of the interaction between Child Protective Services, sending those SCAR forms, and the law enforcement agencies, and including the District Attorney's Office, categorizing, keeping those, keeping track of the information that we have. Other counties have better systems for it, including locally Yolo and, and Los Angeles. I've been communicating with some of them about the other systems other counties are using. So, hopefully, next year, we're going to be able to present to you something very substantive about what's happening at both the law enforcement, CPS, district attorney level, that you will be able to use in making some decisions about protection of children in the criminal level, as well as that interaction with the Child Protective Services. So, that's our next year plan. 2019's coming quickly, so hopefully, we'll have some information for you.
Following the Oversight Committee's 2017 Annual Report, resources were allocated by the Board of Supervisors to address identified needs. CPS uses these resources to create and fill new social worker positions in its emergency response and informal supervision units. According to CPS, this contributed- According to CPS, this contributed to a decrease in caseloads and allowed social workers to provide a more intensive focus on the families assigned to them. The Oversight Committee has observed, and truly has observed, progress in these areas and wishes to thank the Board of Supervisors for their support. This is the list, it's changed actually somewhat since this was put together, but this is a list of our membership. We have, besides Chris and I, we have two members, if you'd just stand up. Sister Jean has been on our committee for decades, and she just retired recently, and some of you were at her retirement, and we have a new person. So, anyway, we want to thank them, and we want to thank all the people that have come to our meetings and have helped us do this report, and thank you, Board of Supervisors. And now, if there are any other questions, we would try to ask or answer them.
Any other questions from the board? No, thank you very much.
No, thank you.
I do have a couple of speaker slips. Mackenzie Wilson?
Here's your work plan. Good job.
So, we missed number 10, so I'm just going to echo. I'm wondering how much funding was cut from the Department of Child, Family and Adult Services to pay for all the tens of millions of unexpected jail-related costs? Why is neglecting families in crisis, or why are we neglecting families in crisis to expand a jail that doesn't work, makes people sicker, and actually destroys families? I'm going to tie in the Rio Consumers Correctional Center fire alarm contract, and I'm going to ask why we're taking litigation funds intended to teach kids in neighborhoods about tobacco when it's possible harms? I sit here and listen to your community tell you that the prison system was not what saved lives, but instead, access to community services is actually what was needed. So again, my question is, how many public dollars are we willing to continue to waste on our dysfunctional incarceration system and homeless sleeps instead of services? People don't get well in cells, our jails need to stop receiving money that belongs to community programs. And most importantly, you must be willing to hold the sheriff accountable and start taking lawsuit money and improvement costs out of his budget. Don't think we didn't notice that you already gave him an increase of $20 million this year alone because of his need for the jail improvements. I'm standing here speaking on the platform of community oversight, and as far as I'm concerned, none of you guys have it. Until you start to implement oversight over you and your spending, and of the sheriff and his spending and the jail expansion, no one in this community who's paying attention will think otherwise about you. I want to point out one time, so as you guys know about me, I'm a very active community organizer and activist in this town. You constantly see me on the news, you constantly see me out in the streets. One day, I had a sheriff's officer follow me and my son home from a protest, and he gave me child endangerment charges for having my son in the street that day. I ended up having to have CPS come to my house, which was actually readily a dope-ass program. It was really cool, having those folks come into my home, teach me better parenting skills, teach me, I mean, my son has an IEP at school, and it ended up being really, really dope. My problem is, is the accessibility of social workers to come out because of these budget cuts that we keep doing, the accessibility of the program. Me and my partner both had to take days off work to be able to, and so that perpetuates poverty in these neighborhoods that we're going into, me having to take time off work to be able to participate in these programs, the ability to show up, to participate in their teachings and things like that. The fact that we're not putting money into programs like drug and alcohol prevention and drug abuse help, mental health services, and into programs that make the family unit more, I guess what you guys want to call, I mean, like what, the correct family unit, right? If we don't have access to services that teach folks, right? We talk about the trauma, drug addiction and their trauma. We're not addressing trauma, so that does not in and of itself end drug addiction. If we put people in a jail cell...
Can you wrap up?
Yeah, of course. It doesn't, it doesn't, we've already talked about this last time we were here. People can't get clean in cells. It doesn't work that way, people die that way. We need to be creating hospitals and things like that. So pretty much where I'm at is I'm complaining again about these budget cuts, 15% across the board, including to child protective services and all of that, for a jail expansion. We're not providing services, and that's what I'm here to just ask you to do. Start to kind of realize where our money's going and ask for a community oversight of yourselves to make sure you're doing it properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mackenzie. Liz Blum? Morning.
First, I just want to mention that I did, as a child, deal with CPS. So, I know firsthand that this is a community-based issue and that criminalizing parents is not the answer. I also just want to bring attention to the speakers from Item 45, and that they're the reasons why services actually work in Sacramento County and why we need to prioritize them in the budget. So this year's budget shows that the board cares more about jails that do not work, do not solve problems, like we have been discussing in this meeting today, and that instead of focusing on evidence-based interventions that actually save kids' lives. When you defund programs like CPS, children lose their lives, as we saw today. I mean, this is a really serious issue, and I'm, that's why I'm here again. So, your constituents deserve to know how much funding was cut from the Department of Child, Family and Adult Services to pay for the tens of millions of jail cuts. Our children, teens, families and communities deserve better. They deserve the option of being tobacco-free, addiction-free, lung cancer-free, which is why we are confused why the $1.6 million in tobacco litigation was diverted from those services. We see viable solutions to this irresponsible spending of our county's dollars. We are asking you to rethink and reduce the population of pretrial detention and low-level misdemeanors, detainees with mental health issues, and the homeless population held in the jails. We're asking you to invest in evidence-based community mental health drug treatment programs, like we heard in Item 45, which also directly correlate to a decrease in CPS interventions. We're asking you to reinvest in communities and allow neighborhoods to heal and prosper. I'll wrap up.
Thank you, Liz. Thank you.
Oh, one more.
No, no, wrap up, yeah.
Okay. A responsible decision that prioritizes life-affirming public safety would be to prioritize funding into the proven effective programs like the Black Child Legacy Campaign or the Saving Our Legacy Project, and not the jails. We need to reimagine how we think about public safety in this county. We need you to follow the research and data that maps out real tangible solutions, sustainable solutions, to problems that our county is facing. We have to stop spending the majority of our budget on engaging people. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Flo? Flo, do you know if we have the handout, the frequently asked questions back in? Okay, good, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. There's, I have no other cards. Are there any questions of the board, comments? Thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much. Next item.
Item 48, Department of Child, Family and Adult Services' Response to the Child Protective Services Oversight Committee 2018 Annual Report.
Finally, Michelle Cañez.
Michelle Cañez, Director, Child, Family and Adult Services. Let me just get situated here. All right, so first of all, thank you, Dr. Johnson and Chris, for presenting, and also we want to acknowledge the contributions of the Oversight Committee. For the past 23 years, they have made recommendations that have strengthened our policies, systems, work, practices, and helped lead to a stronger infrastructure with respect to continuous quality improvement. We also appreciate this year's efforts to understand the overlap between other child, family and adult-serving systems and partners in our community. As they stated, we cannot do our work alone. By the time a child reaches our attention, harm has been done. And there is a role that behavioral health plays, both from the mental health perspective, alcohol and drug, probation, education, and I just appreciate their efforts to understand those overlaps because I think that can help strengthen the infrastructure within our community to address child safety and well-being. So, it was glad, I was glad that Supervisor Natoli asked about the five situations. So, I did look a little more closely at those. So, there were five cases that were covered. Four incidents took place in 2017, one took place in 2018. Of the four that took place in 2017, three were fatalities, one was a near fatality. Of those three fatalities, two involved drowning. One was in a swimming pool, one was in a bathtub. The near fatality in 2018 was a near drowning in a bathtub. And one of the things that came to mind for me is that we do a lot of, we put a lot of effort into educating about pool safety, water safety with our rivers here, and I think this kind of alerted me that we need to do some more education with the folks that we work with around bathtub safety. I don't know how many people realize how many drownings occur, children especially under a year, and how many people realize that children can die in one to two inches of water. So there's some work that we can certainly do in that area. But all five, while there was the overlay of mental health issues, domestic violence, substance abuse in some of them, at the end of the day, the inadequate supervision is what occurred at the time of the critical incident. And so I think our efforts to educate about pool safety, water safety, that's going to be critical to trying to strengthen basically prevention in our community, similar to what we do with safe infant, safe sleeping. So, just to add a little bit more context, so in 2017 and 2018 combined, we handled 34,588 investigations or cases. So again, it's five cases out of 34,588, and that's not to minimize those incidents or minimize any of the recommendations. It represents 0.014% of all the cases we worked with. So, all that being set aside, the recommendations that the Oversight Committee made are in complete alignment with our CPS values and practices, and we have, as they noted, done a tremendous amount of work in each of the areas. We've worked incredibly hard, as they noted, on creating a learning environment, which I think has fostered the strengthening of critical thinking. We have invited the Oversight Committee into our Quality Improvement Committee to hear more about all the efforts that are being made. We're using data, we continue to strengthen our data muscle and continue to use it to inform practices, training, and how we allocate our existing resources. And then we are, one of the areas that we've worked really hard on is taking the lessons learned, not just from these critical incidents, but we do a significant number of case reviews just random to get an assessment of overall performance and practice. And we take the lessons from those down to the line-level social workers, supervisors and program managers, as we continue to look at where it is that we can do better. So, ongoing efforts. The strong partnerships, I think was mentioned, we continue to work with probation, law enforcement, public health, our county office of education and local school districts, all in efforts to better respond to and serve our young people that are being sexually exploited, reducing the number of kids that cross over from child welfare to probation, improving educational outcomes. And then also, we have staff that are co-located in all our law enforcement agencies, as well in all seven community incubator lead sites that are part of the Black Child Legacy Campaign. With respect to verification of service engagement, we put together a work group to look at how we can create a better feedback loop with respect to when we make referrals and whether or not caretakers follow up. We've got a great system in place with our Birth and Beyond Family Resource Centers, as well as our Community Incubator Lead Sites. We do warm handoffs, they work with us on our child and family team meetings, so we're looking at how we can create that with more of our service providers. With public health, I'm excited about this hotline pilot that we developed. Dr. Casirier continues to just be an amazing partner from the public health side. At the Children Death Review Team Meeting Report, one of you, I believe it may have been Mr. Natoli, brought up the issue of when we get calls to the hotline with women who are pregnant and using substances. For child welfare, if there are no other children in the home, we don't have any authority to respond. And so typically, we evaluate those out, we encourage the hospital to give them resources for prenatal care, substance use services, but we can't legally intervene. What we are doing now is working with public health, so when we get these types of calls, we would still evaluate out if there are no other children in the home, but we offer them connection to our perinatal substance use line. It's the, what is it called? Sorry about that, but it's a prenatal, they'll go out and provide prenatal care, they will work with the women even when they don't have other children, and then they will also provide a loopback to us as to whether there was follow-up with the mother, so that we can kind of red flag it on our end. But we'll also do a warm connection directly to the baby line in public health, so that we don't just give a number and it's easy to not then pick up and call back.
And there's no income restriction or any other barrier to that? So if they, if you get the call...
We can make that, yes.
You make the referral, and you can get to visit to the home and so forth.
Exactly. Our hotline worker will really try to engage and have a connection that'll hopefully facilitate that warm handoff directly into the line. Now, the line goes from eight to five, but we can still, after hours, provide that number.
Okay, thanks.
And then, with respect to domestic violence, as Mr. Wagstaff noted, we fully understand the impact that domestic violence has on our families, substance use and mental health. We often talk about the trifecta. And each of the five incidents involved one or more of those to different degrees. You know, for some, the substance abuse issues had been addressed, but there were other issues that resulted from that. We have a pretty robust response with domestic violence, but it's an area that we want to focus on even more this coming year, in looking at how we can develop more specific training, coaching, and working with our domestic violence agencies to strengthen how we serve and support our families dealing with domestic violence. And I will just speak to the substance use issue, and it was a great question that Supervisor Serna had of, you know, at what point do we intervene? And as Mr. Orr noted, it is a difficult balance for us, but when we get calls that involve substance use or abuse, what we have to assess is the impact of those substances, be they legal or illegal, on their ability to provide a safe nurturing environment for the children. So oftentimes, we go in and we see a direct correlation between the substance use and threats to children, to the safety of children. In those cases, we have far more authority to take action and actually intervene. In situations where it's just kind of iffy, we still have to do that assessment. We will engage to the best we are able to, to encourage them to seek services. Certainly, as we have legalized marijuana, we still do those assessments. If it's pain, prescription medications, we do those assessments. If we see evidence of methamphetamine pipes, that does raise our level of concern, and we still have to impact the, assess the impact of their use on the safety of children in the home. And that is sometimes an ongoing, it's making all our collateral contacts to verify information, asking the parents to test voluntarily. If they don't, that's another red flag, and we keep looking at... If they don't, that's another red flag, and we keep looking at how high of an intervention level we can take.
Supervisor Serna?
Thanks for the explanation. Is there a common assessment tool, regardless of what the suspected substance might be that is being abused?
It's like with any situation, we assess the impact of the behavior, so they keep asking more and more questions. We have a number of-
So there's no, like, survey instrument that you apply, or?
No.
Set of questions that are common to each circumstance, right?
No, I don't believe so. No, we don't. And that's certainly something that we can look into as far, I mean, we have our UC Davis Regional Training Academy, they provide mandatory trainings for all social workers across the state in this area. We can certainly look into, are there tools that can help us dig even deeper? I'm happy to follow up on that piece of it.
And then what about suspected, not just use, but let's say sales? Does that, selling narcotics, if there's a scale out on the table?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, is there a different set of assumptions that our social workers have when they see something like that, which obviously can mean a whole, you know, can mean a lot different, a lot of different things for the welfare of the child in the house if sales of narcotics are being conducted in that household, right?
Right. So that would be part of the assessment. Sometimes if there's sales taking place out of the hall, there's, out of the house, there's other activity taking place that could impact the safety of the children, so that would be part of the assessment. And then if there's illegal behavior, I mean, we do cross-report to law enforcement situations.
So are social workers legally mandated to do that?
Legally mandated to report?
Are they legally required to report to law enforcement?
If we see, yeah, if we see illegal activity, yes.
Including?
Yeah, we would do that cross-report.
Including substance abuse, illegal substance abuse?
If they're, if we believe they are selling narcotics, yes.
But what about use?
No, we don't cross-report use.
Okay.
Yeah. We would impact, you know, from our perspective, the impact on kids, but if they, if we see evidence that they're selling, yeah, we would cross-report.
And then what about the interaction with the child themselves? I mean, in terms of the substance abuse in the household question, so you assess the situation based on questions that are administered, it sounds like on a kind of customized basis depending on what the circumstances with the, with the legal guardian or the adult in the household. But do you, depending on the age of the child or children, also talk to them and try to assess from their perspective what they witnessed, what their, what their experience has been with substance abuse from, you know, from their vantage point?
Yes, we do. And again, you're right, the age, the age impacts our ability to communicate certain things, but one of the tools we use with our safety organized practice is, it's a tool called Three Houses, and the kids can draw out kind of the things that are, you know, what they're worried about. And sometimes things come up through that assessment. So our social workers are really good about trying to engage the kids where they are developmentally to try to get the best information possible. We also have just strengthened our work on doing prevention child and family team meetings. And oftentimes, bringing in other family members, they can offer information about the, you know, additional impact of substance use that may not come out in the interviews with the kids or the parents.
Is CPS working at all with either or both of our concerted efforts in drug and alcohol with regards to opioid abuse and methamphetamine? We have kind of these task forces that are set up on both of those substances in particular. Is CPS working in conjunction with that ever, just like, you know, DHA is doing it because of the connection with homelessness?
Yeah, we are part of that task force. And we haven't seen the impact that other child welfare jurisdictions have with respect to opioids, but we are certainly, you know, aware that it could manifest more significantly here. But we are part of that task force, and, you know, just hearing the discussion, I mentioned to Melissa, you know, we have some mental health clinicians that go out with our ER, social workers, to do some mental health assessments of the parents when our social workers are like, I just need a little more help here. I can reach out to Dr. Valenson and see if that might be something we can do with our alcohol and drug counselors. Can they come out real time to be able to help us when we have some concerns that may not be able to get to the issues we're trying to get to?
I think that would be wise.
Yeah, yeah.
I think there's just too much anecdotal and clinical data that tell us that, especially methamphetamine, just has-
Yes.
-an acute effect on not just the welfare of the person that's abusing it, but people in their orbit, right, including their children. So I would love to hear this time next year that we've made some progress in terms of how to make it an even more robust system that includes alcohol and drug, maybe a little bit more so in terms of the assessment tools that are applied, or working in conjunction with our social workers on home visitation, and how best to really hone in on the effects that especially methamphetamine are having on children.
Mm-hmm. Yes, we'll do.
Supervisor Frost?
When I toured the Family Justice Center, they talked about how they videotaped some of those interviews to minimize the trauma to, to the family, so that they wouldn't have to go through that process of telling their story over and over. Do you, in your interviews, are they, do you videotape interviews, or do you document them in that way, or do you just document them in writing? Is it escalated further up after their interaction with you? How does that work?
Yeah, so we don't interview our, we don't videotape our investigations. When it gets to the Sexual Assault Forensic Interview Center, which is Special Assault Forensic Exam Center, that's the SAFE Center that's co-located with the Family Justice Center. Typically, that's when we have evidence that there's more abuse, and those social workers there are forensically trained to be able to dig a little bit deeper. And then typically, we've got law enforcement also listening in to see if there's certain information that can lead to criminal charges. It's an amazing program if you haven't been out to our SAFE Center. They do some great work there. Much of their work, because of the information they've been able to glean, has led to convictions of folks.
So they're referred to there from your, from your office?
Correct. And from law enforcement if they want a little deeper assessment, yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And then, real quick on the ongoing efforts, the Oversight Committee mentioned the Sacramento County Prevention Cabinet. Just to give you a little bit of background on that, back in January of 2017, County Welfare Directors Association Children's Committee had a presentation on prevention, child abuse prevention. And it led to a discussion amongst all the directors about, you know, we never really talk about child abuse prevention. Our system is more of a response system after child abuse or neglect has occurred or is suspected to have occurred. And we engaged in, you know, a pretty intensive effort to see how we can go further upstream and strengthen efforts within our community to reduce the flow-in to child abuse hotlines. So we had a state convening, there's a prevention cabinet at the state level that's working on this, but also we, every county, or at least about 25 or so counties, have established local prevention committees where they're looking at, how do we strengthen the infrastructure within our community, the safety net in our community, to get more, you know, be it mental health services, early childhood intervention services, home visitation, alcohol and drug services out into the community. So there's a group of us that are working on that with the hopes of presenting a plan by next, having a draft plan ready by February, March of next year, to prepare for the three-year renewal of the first five they're getting ready to do there, they'll be doing their three-year strategic plan, as well as the Mental Health Services Act three-year strategic plan. So we're trying to have some options in place, also preparing for some federal legislation, the Family First Prevention Services Act. So we're just trying to be a little more proactive, so that when fending does become available, we can, we can jump on it quickly with an actual plan. All right, so moving forward, here's some good news. The caseload issue that the Oversight Committee mentioned, and that has been an area of concern for a number of years, actually. So the Child Welfare League of America caseload standards for emergency response is 10 to 12 new investigations a month, 10 being optimal, 12 being, no more than 12 should be assigned. And then for permanency, it's 18 to 20. So for emergency response, just backing up a little bit, in 2015, we were averaging 19 new investigations per social worker, which, which was really, really difficult for our social workers to respond to and do some good social work.
Describe what you mean by that, as far as 19 per what?
Per month.
Per month.
So new referrals per month, and then, and then because there were so many coming in, they're just trying to attend to fires, and they haven't been able to close them, and then the next month, they have 19 more.
Okay.
Right? So it's, it's that hamster in a wheel kind of thing. So as this board has supported the addition of new positions, particularly on the front end, we've been able to see a reduction in those caseloads. So from 20, in 2015, we had 19. From January through July, we're averaging 13 new investigations per month. So we're getting closer to the 10 to 12. Our social workers are reporting feeling just such relief, they're able to work more intensively with our families, they're able to do better social work, and they're able to spend more time with families. So we're on a good track there, and we will keep looking at whether we need to allocate more resources, shift what we have. For our permanency caseloads, again, the CWLA standard is 18 to 20. There was a time where we were in the 40s, when we were really struggling. Now, the current caseload is about 17. Again, that's average, so some will have more, some will have less, particularly as newer workers, you know, they build up slowly to get to a full caseload. So they're currently at 17, and there are six vacancies that will be filling, so that will continue, hopefully, to get better. And then I just want to share some successes, and some of this is based on, starting in 2014, where we really started looking at what, if any, impact is a Title IV waiver having. And so since 2014, we have seen a reduction of maltreatment by 22%. We have increased the number of kids that are achieving permanency, so either going back to their families, adoption, or guardianship. We had an issue with one of the federal measures for kids in care longer than two years. We had a lot of kids in care that were there longer than two years, they're referred to as languishing in care. We improved by 110% in that particular area by focusing on intensive family finding. We've been doing permanency case reviews, identifying and addressing the barriers to renification or to permanency. So we've made some significant gains in that. We'd never hit that federal measure. We hit it, and we have maintained and sustained it and improved it over the last, I think, nine months now. So great work in that area. We've decreased re-entries by 13 and 1/2%, and we've decreased the number of children in foster care by 30%. We're doing some great work on the front end to keep children and families safely together, bringing wraparound services to them, intensive services. We expanded Early Intervention Family Drug Court, which is addressing substance abuse and allowing children and families to be together. Our informal, what we call informal supervision, but it's really intensive supervision, with this board support, again, we added three more units since 2012. We only had two at the time. Now with five units, on average, over the past six months, we're serving 559 children each month, children and families, but the 559 represents the children. Of those, only 2% or 11 of those 559 have needed court intervention, which typically involves entering foster care. So we are keeping out of the foster care system 548 children. So we are just really trying to shift forward and invest in keeping children and families safely together.
Michelle, would you attribute any of that toward the fact that we've participated in the IV waiver?
Yes. I, yeah. It led to more resources, it strengthened our partnerships with our Family Resource Centers, our Birth and Beyond Sites, we're providing aftercare services, absolutely, yeah.
So if Congresswoman Matt Suie and Congressman Barra is watching this, you just got your answer.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then just another highlight, you continue to hear about the efforts of the Black Child Legacy Campaign. We're working really closely with our Community Incubator Lead Sites. I'm really proud of the CPS Cultural Broker Program that was started, and the positive feedback we're getting from our families there, and how their perspective of CPS is shifting and seeing us as not just the agency that rips families apart, so we're really happy with that. And then from the housing world, you know, we came to this board back in, I think, early 2017 to get authority to enter into the Bringing Families Home Program. Through that project, Bringing Families Home is to provide housing for children and families involved in child welfare. And for some of our families, we don't remove solely because of homelessness, but when parents complete everything, we cannot reunify when there's no home, right? We can't reunify back to homelessness. So since starting that family and working with our partners at DHA and leveraging other housing resources, we've housed 135 families, which I think has also contributed to the reduction of children in foster care. We're able to get them into homes with their families. And then final recognition of practices, we were identified, selected back in March of 2018 to be a peer learning court to other jurisdictions across the United States for our Early Intervention Family Drug Court and our Dependency Drug Court. This is a partnership we have with Behavioral Health, and they selected us to do, to serve as a peer county. We presented at a tri-regional convening in Kansas City, Missouri, that was attended by several federal agencies, as well as 17 Midwestern and Southern states to learn more about the work that we're doing here in Sacramento. We've also attended conferences and shared our information, and we've hosted site visits with teams from LA, Missouri, Texas, as well as the Department of Social Services. And then last thing, and then I will wrap up, I just want to acknowledge all the staff, social workers on up in Child Protective Services, as I said, they do amazing work each and every day, and we are committed to continually improve what it is we're doing and better serving our community. So open to questions.
Supervisor Natoli?
I just wanted to first thank Michelle for her presentation, and certainly the responses that were embedded in the report on the item, and for some additional information on the particular cases that helps. And I guess I wanted just to draw focus to that, you know, as we have done, I think, with some of the other factors that relate to infant injury, serious injury and death, that, again, I don't know what we're doing, maybe to people say, well, it's a pretty simple thing that people should know about, and I heard that, you know, inadequate supervision as related to drownings or near drownings. And it would seem to me that, as we've done with SIDS, and certainly some of the other risk factors with the Black Child Legacy Campaign, and certainly with our Family Resource Centers, that, you know, equip certainly social workers, but public health nurses and other providers, and, you know, maybe it's time to, again, if that's what we're seeing, you know, again, it's not simply the fact that they're bathing the child, but then, as you say, they step away or whatever. I think information, obviously, people need to pay attention to that. So I don't know what it could be, you know, without bringing, again, too much focus to that this morning for what you're bringing forth in the context of the report. But I would guess I would suggest that maybe an area that, obviously, in your review of that, I think, Michelle, certainly along with, obviously, the Oversight Committees, that would be helpful, maybe there's some initiative we could launch, maybe there's some monies available through a public health initiative. You talked about Dr. Casirio being a strong partner, and I think that maybe there's an opportunity there to, you know, beef up our efforts. And again, sometimes you're never going to know what impact you have, but if, you know, we're able to, you know, see a trend over time that- we're able to, you know, see a trend over time that, you know, that becomes a lesser risk factor and, or, you know, result in cases, I would like to see us have some focus on that.
Definitely.
Also, I just wanted to note, too, that, and I know Supervisor Kennedy brought some highlight to it on his question about the Title 4E, but just the fact that, you know, you talk about the 30% reduction, but when, going back a number of years now, but when we had thousands upon thousands of kids in the foster care system, you know, certainly the impact to the children and to the families, and obviously, the costs associated with that, and now, I think with the, you know, the efforts to find permanency, but to also, you know, keep children safe and to be supportive of families in ways that allows them to, whether it's getting housing, or access to health services, or mental health services, you know, addiction treatment and so forth, all those things enter into it, but I think it really does highlight, I think, you know, what we've done in this county and our communities for the children and families with, with those federal dollars that flow to us, and, you know, it's, I don't think you can understate the importance, it's not the only thing, but it's certainly, you know, that factor, recognizing that those funds are at risk right now, and, and that could have a severe impact upon the, you know, the health and welfare of people that are being served, I think, on just the general health and welfare of this community in our county and people in it, so I think anything we can do to continue to highlight that information, so those that are in some position of, of leadership that could maybe influence those decisions back in Washington DC are well aware of what that means, just that the foster caseload reduction in itself is significant, and I know there are other factors besides 4E, but again, I think a lot of good news embedded in your report, and certainly, we've got areas where we're challenged, but I want to just thank you for your leadership, and that of, you know, all the folks that, that work daily to keep children and families safe in this community.
Supervisor Natoli, if I could, just very briefly, I just want to assure the board that we're working very hard to, if we don't get an extension of the 4E waiver, to at least get some authorization, some relief, so that we can continue these important efforts, and we mentioned Congressman Matt Suie and Congressman Berra, that's just the start of what we're trying to do with other jurisdictions, other states, planning a trip back there, we're working very hard to get some relief there.
You know, Bruce, just to that, again, obviously, our chair's, you know, leadership role, but, you know, I, I think it's significant enough, you know, when we face the potential loss of, you know, again, tens of millions of dollars annually, and all that that backs up relative to the initiatives and to, you know, to, I think, better outcomes for children and families, that, you know, if you need to call upon, I would imagine, any member of this board to not only visit here locally, but to go to where we need to go, to take the message to them, along with, obviously, a delegation of folks, and, you know, I, I don't think it would be a bad idea, I don't know if there's ever going to be any congressional hearings on this, but, you know, we heard powerful testimony this morning from, you know, some of the folks on the recovery item, but I mean, there's got to be powerful testimony that, you know, may be related to some of those same factors, but where it's made a difference in the lives of children, and I mean, and, you know, I, I don't know if that moves members in Congress or the White House or anywhere else, but, you know, telling those stories, and so I guess I would just say that that's not a tactic as much as it is taking the story to the folks who actually have the ability to make those decisions, and, and I guess I would just encourage you to think along those lines, if we needed to, you know, put together, you know, a small delegation of folks to go back and actually, you know, cover the cost for a couple of family members to, you know, assuming you could get the audience, it'd be nice to have the national audience in a committee hearing or something like that, but certainly, to, to others who may be in key influence positions on that legislation, I would suggest that might be something we want to consider, and, you know, and it might be a little extraordinary, but I think this is, you know, a circumstance where that would be warranted.
Thank you.
Supervisor Cerna.
Thank you. So, I appreciate Supervisor Natoli's suggestion, and I know Supervisor Kennedy has, has been working closely with Bruce and Nav and others on the 4E waiver as of I. One of the things that we've talked about is working through NACO as well, and in my new capacity as Chair of the Health Policy Steering Committee, perhaps using that platform to amplify and emphasize the import, not just to Sacramento County, but to, I would imagine, thousands of others across the, the country on this subject. I know that our delegation has already signed on to a joint letter
Right.
Supporting legislation in both houses. I think the idea of having some testimonials, whether in person or perhaps, if the, if we can't make that work, perhaps a small video production of folks that have really benefited from the waiver and what it means, could be considered, and maybe that's something we could, you know, impress upon those that haven't made up their minds in Congress yet about this, and use that to, to some effect.
Yeah, we'll do that, and we had a very productive meeting with Congresswoman Matt Suie last week, and we plan a meeting with Congressman Berra, I believe, it's one week out, and Bruce and Michelle, they're looking at a trip back to Washington DC engagement, NACO and the video, whatever material we have. This is extremely important for us.
Yeah, I think our work is really cut out, not with our own delegation, I think they, they get it, but it's going to be with, again, those that perhaps have not yet decided to prioritize this.
Correct. Okay, I have no more questions from the board. I do have a speaker slip. Thank you, Michelle. Sheila Boxley.
Good morning, and it is barely still morning. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Michelle very eloquently talked about the Prevention Cabinet, which is what I wanted to address, so I'll be quite brief. Since I last spoke with you about the Sacramento Prevention Cabinet, the membership has expanded. There are 20 different disciplines that are now engaged in this, so it really is an effort to look systemically at how we can do perhaps some simpler things that will make a difference just through better collaboration, or looking at policies and procedures, as well as looking at the effectiveness of programs. And I have to tell you, is, one of the first things that the data told us were those three elements that you've been talking about this morning and their impact, but there are also other targets and other issues, including particular populations that aren't being served as much as others, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention in light of your conversation, that we've also been identifying some threats, not just where do we stand right now, and what does our data look like, but what would happen? What would happen to children and families and communities if the 4E waiver is not extended and all of those programs and services go away? And I will tell you specifically, in terms of Birth and Beyond, what that means is that the home visitation and intervention services for children six and over would not be funded. It also means that the domestic violence services in partnership with the other organizations in our community would no longer be sitting in the Family Resource Centers and doing home visits. So, there's some very concrete examples, and I can assure you that if you want testimonials, there are some very powerful ones, and we'd be happy to help with that. But basically, I think it's critical to say, in terms of the Prevention Cabinet, nobody's getting paid for it, all the agencies, public and private, are taking time to do it, full day retreat, really invested in this, and so, we're looking very forward to bringing you some recommendations and a report. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila, and thanks for everything you're doing out there. Any other questions? I have no more speaker slips, so thank you, Michelle and Bruce, and the entire staff for what is probably as difficult a job as we have in this county, and you're doing it very well. Thank you. With that, I do have a speaker slip for public comment, and that's Chris Bolshazey. Thank you for the phonetics.
My name is Chris Bolshazey, I'm the Field Rep for ASIU Local 1021, and I'm also the Chief Negotiator for the Sacramento County Welfare Supervisors Unit, and currently, I wanted to kind of give you a little snapshot of negotiations from our perspective, and maybe fill in some gaps that you may not be aware of. I may be wondering why I don't have the whole theater in purple, because I didn't want to escalate this up. I do have the full support of my 360-some members, it fluctuates depending upon resignations. My chapter president just retired and moved to Texas, so hopefully, he'll be replaced. And the other issue that we have is sometimes getting time off, you've got to request vacation time, and that's scrutinized by the program managers, and sometimes they see, they ask them, what are you taking the time off for? They say, well, I want to go to the Board Supervisors' meetings, and they say, no, there's a business need, we can't let you go, because, you know, supervisors are kind of the glue that holds that department together for DHA and for DC, so, you know, that's another issue. However, if things don't go well, you may see in the future a request to be on the agenda and maybe see a little different response, but for now, in my next 30 seconds, I've already wasted my minute and a half, because I have a laundry list of things I think you should hear about, but the two things, the CPS report for DHA comes before you in November. It's a five-year class study moving the eligibility supervisors to HISU class, this solves a lot of problems, but currently, negotiations move without knowing how that's going to turn out. It makes it difficult for us to negotiate any sort of, you know, compensation, because, as you know, an eligibility supervisor makes less than a HISU, so that does create some contentions for us, and also, in the last round of bargaining, we did, requested a class study for the program specialists because of the nature of the 10% spread, they were kind of left in the dust, and the Human Services Master degree moved up. What that did was that put them out of the 5% range, and they can no longer move back and forth between a program specialist and a supervisor. That did create some difficulties, and now you have a brain, a brain drain, as it were, for program specialists, especially for, in the CPS and APS units. The county did recognize that, says, yes, we have an issue, they put something on the table, however, I don't know if it was designed or not designed, we represent all program specialists that are in DHA, and this causes a rift. If we go back to the membership and say, yeah, we're only going to give some extra monies to the program specialists on DC side, you know, the other folks are going to say, wait a second, I'm still the same class, why shouldn't I be getting the same? So, that does create an issue.
I want to hit the high points, Chris.
Pardon?
You might want to hit the high points.
I'm trying to, these are, these are all high points, so, at the table, we were told the county wanted the 10% salary spread language, we said, you know, we can negotiate that, but you're going to have to put some money on the table, that never occurred. The comment from Robert Bonner was, "We don't think you should be getting something for nothing," was the comment, and that was not well received by our folks, because we did give up some pertinent contract language in the last rounds of negotiations. So, we don't feel we're giving up, you're getting something for nothing, we did, we did give up things. And on a comparable note, if you look at the management's contract, they do get a 3.4%, just because stipend or benefit, whereas our folks don't, and also, we've been told management's rights.
Can you wrap up, Chris?
I'm trying to get there real quick.
Yeah.
So, I, I think, we're trying to deal with equity, this is, this is the short end of it, we're trying to deal with equity issues, looking at differentials, we're trying to look at compaction, because you have a compaction issue that's going to start with your workers, because minimum wages are going up, which is going to have an impact on the supervisors. We're also looking at fixing some of the retention issues that we have going on in there, so hopefully, when we mediate again next week, we have a more positive outcome, if not, then some things, you know, our discussions may change, and hopefully, we can come visit you guys soon.
Thank you, sir.
We need to increase to three or four minutes, so, okay, thanks.
You always have access to us.
We're working on that.
Thank you. All right, I have no other cards. With that, we'll, we'll take the appointments in the afternoon, and we do have closed session, correct, Mr. Gill?
Yes, we do.
Okay, then we will recess to closed session. Call back to order the meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, but the clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisors Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Cerna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum. Okay, Item 49 is the George Hill's Annual Report Presentation. It says it's a county council item, so I guess I should call up Mr.
Well, I'm not going to do it.
Randy Rendig, to give the George Hill's Annual Report.
Well done.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Last year, I remember coming up here and talking about the fact that the report was going to, was very positive, and I was looking forward to giving the report, unfortunately, I can't make the same speech today, but we're going to go through the slides and have some explanation on what happened last year, and if you have any questions, obviously, after that, be happy to entertain those, so. So, the first slide is, shows the total program costs and the percentages by lines of payment, and so, as you can see, the George Hill's administrative fees, frankly, over the last three years, at least all begin with a seven, and, you know, increased 2% last year, 4% this year. It's still, though, with the number of claims that we get, although every year, it's a similar number, there's a lot of differences in the claims we handle, depending on how much litigation we have, so I, I think those costs are, are good in terms of remaining relatively the same. I'm sure the owner would like to see numbers higher than that, but that's the way it is. The attorney's fees and costs went up substantially, and that's as a result of a number of large litigated cases that required a lot of discovery, and a lot of those cases had attorney fees exposure, which, of course, drives up the cost, you can only do so much in terms of trying to derail plaintiff's counsel in doing what we would say sometimes is unnecessary discovery, but you've got to do what you've got to do to defend the case. It looks bad against last year, but the year before that is very similar, so you never want to have a higher benchmark than you had before, so it is higher, but again, similar to '16, '17. Where you really see the difference are the claim payments. Substantial increase from last year and a big increase from the year before. You'll see an asterisk next to that $15.3 million number. Part of the explanation of that got cut off on the bottom of the slide, $5 million of that was paid by an excess carrier, and so, when you knock that down to 10.3, it actually is less than what was paid in '16, '17, because there weren't any excess carriers paid then. But we had a large case where the ASIR was paid and the excess carrier paid an additional five, so if, if you want to say, what did the county actually pay, it's $10,003, but of course, that's not the real measure, it's the overall cost of the case, because you still have to pay for premiums and that sort of thing, so that's what is meant by that asterisk. Miscellaneous fees and costs, that, again, is our minor expenses we have sometimes for an auto appraisal, stuff that we can't categorize in with legal fees or legal expenses. B shows the dollar spent by category, increase or decrease. Unfortunately, as you'll see, except for the miscellaneous fees and costs, they are all increases. Again, the George Hill's fees, up 7%, attorney's fees and costs, again, when you compare '16, '17 to '18, '19, it's not too bad, but it was up, again, as I said, this year versus last year because of the types of cases we were handling. Claim payments, I want to mention at this point that in your report, you will see reference to the claims payments going up 18% from the prior year to this year. It's actually 125% in the report. The slide is right, the narrative had the wrong figure in it, that will be corrected, and I will be shooting out a new copy of the report to you. I was actually looking at the 18% of the attorney's fees and costs rather than the claim payments, so, in the report, it says 8%, 18%, it's actually 125%. Again, the miscellaneous fees and costs and the total, so 2018, '19 was a big year in terms of payments. I'd like to think that there were good reasons for it, because of, again, several multimillion-dollar cases, but if, if what we have in our inventory right now doesn't fluctuate too much, I would expect that number to go down somewhat. Actually, I take that back, next year, it's going to be going up again, I can predict, because of one particular case, so we won't, since that case isn't resolved, we can't talk about it now. So, in addition to that $7 million payment, again, five of which was from excess, there were seven other payments that totaled $6,32,000, and what that really means is you've got eight cases that represent 85% of you've got eight cases that represent 85% of the dollars that were spent. So again, it's all about large losses, all about the large shock losses that affect these kinds Exhibit C shows the assignments per law firm on the five-panel firm, which now is a four-panel firm. The Craig or Chalfont firm was disbanded last year. And in fact, Mr. Chalfont is now a George Hills employee and is our general counsel and is involved in some of our clients' matters and other general counsel George Hills information. So they no longer are receiving any files. We have with the four firms and running anywhere, as I say, in the last three years, from 55 to 80 new assignments a year. That's, four firms can handle that with ease. So if the number goes back up and it gets back up to triple digits at some point, I certainly think it would be worthwhile to look at hiring another firm. But again, 104, 25 new files a year for each firm is not a big case load.
This question might be for county council. How is it determined which firm, I mean, is it just a rotating or is it based upon expertise? I mean, what, how do you guys decide?
That actually is a question for Mr. Rendig.
Oh, is it?
Because George Hills does assignments of these cases.
Each of the firms have their own respective areas of expertise, some more than others. For instance, Porter Scott that has 37 lawyers, they could handle anything they want. The O'Day firm is smaller. The Rivera firm is small. Actually, the Rivera firm, which took most of the Craig or Chalfont work, is now a bigger firm. But it really supervisor is expertise, what their current overall pending in the office is, can they handle, do they have too much work to where they may not be able to give you the type of service that you want because they have too many files. But it really is, and the other thing is familiarity with the various departments because you see a lot of repeat with the sheriff's department, even public works. And so when they've already talked to the same person in five, you know, different lawsuits, just makes sense to keep talking to that same person. You're not reinventing the wheel every time. So expertise, familiarity with department or individuals involved and the overall assignments that are going on within each particular firm.
And, and do you manage who within the firm is assigned to a case? Or do you, you provide input on that? I mean, you know, so we're not getting associates all the time?
Yes and no. It depends on the case. If it's a big case, the partners know they're supposed to handle this. If it's a smaller case, then there is some discretion amongst the partners as to whether they will still be responsible for that case, but they may have an associate do a lot of work on it.
Okay, thank you.
D is the costs distributed amongst the firms. Again, as you'll see, and I should say, with respect to Evans, Wykowsky and Ward, they are a smaller, they are the smallest firm we have. And really, their expertise, if you will, again, any of the other firms could handle these as well. But they do a lot of road cases and they do a lot of auto accidents. And they don't have any barrier right now that practices in the, in the federal courts. And so they get a smallish kind of, they, they may get a lot of cases, but those cases either get settled fairly early on, or they may go to trial, but not a lot of them do. And so that's why you see a difference in their fees versus everybody else's. E is showing cases, litigated cases closed during the year with payments, without payments. We always shoot for a higher number, as high a number as we can without trying to force a case that maybe you should pay something on and it costs you way too much in the end because you tried to not have to pay anything. Philosophy has always been if we owe it, pay it, get rid of it as soon as you can. If it's a good defensible case, defend it. So 60% closing ratio is the highest it's been since I can remember doing this report. So good, but again, there's not a lot of, we, we can only influence so much how a case is going to resolve. And a lot of that is luck of the draw, but some of it is a result of good or bad claim handling. I'd like to say that it's not the claim or the bad claim handling that affects those numbers. But there's only so much you can do in any given case. It's going to make a decision as to whether you owe it because there's probable or clear liability or whether you're going to defend it because there's little or no liability. So 60% is a good number. There's really nothing wrong with any of those three years numbers. F shows where the losses come from, not surprisingly, and this would be true with almost any municipality. Law enforcement these days, no surprise that they are constantly getting hammered, sometimes rightfully so, and sometimes not rightfully so. And so most of the lawsuits, and the big target is law enforcement. And we get a lot of non-meritorious lawsuits that go away quickly and we don't have to pay a lot on. We get other cases that, you know, there may be clear liability and we've got to pay on and we try and get rid of them as soon as we can. Typically, however, those are filed where the plaintiff's attorneys can recover their fees. And so they will drive up the cost as best they can, do as much discovery as they can, and then decide to settle a case. Again, we try and, try and resolve them early on if we can, but we do meet a lot of roadblocks in terms of attorneys saying, well, I really think I need to take 10 more depositions or I need to hire five more experts. And so that's a battle you're always fighting with an attorney fee exposure case. All the rest of the departments and agencies are, it's spread around pretty much the same, rather than the typical law enforcement where you have civil rights violations or officer-involved shootings. The rest of them are pretty much auto accident, road cases and employment cases.
What's non-jurisdictional?
I'm sorry?
What's non-jurisdictional?
They've sued, they, they filed claim or sued against the county when it happened in the city. And we get a fair amount of those as, I'm sure the city of Sac gets a lot of ours as well. So we still have to, you know, do our thing in terms of immediately rejecting and advising the attorney that you got the wrong agency. Sometimes we can do that by getting a declaration by the involved department. In instance, if it's on city streets and county doesn't know and maintain or control this intersection or this stretch of roadway. Most of the time, a lot of the time, not most of the time, attorneys will then let you out if you give them the proper declaration. But if it's a big, big, big case, they're going to try and keep you in in the hopes that they're going to find something.
Right.
G is by type of claim. Again, the other bodily injury, this flips, seems to flip back and forth from year to year. It's either the other bodily injury that's the highest or it's the other personal injury which is the highest. Last year's personal injury, this year it's bodily injury. Again, not a big difference, 45% to 39%. But the other personal injury cases we define as there's no bodily injury, if you will, nothing physical that they can go in and treat it for. But if it's emotional distress, somebody was fired to where they have a wage loss and they have emotional distress, lost wages, but there's no actual physical injury, those go into the other personal injury column. And this, the final slide just shows a 10-year history of the new claims received every year. It's amazing to me that, again, the last three years are within, I think, 20 of each other from low to high. I did, just for fun, run to see what the 10-year average is, and it was 610. So back in the mid, mid to late 2000s, we were still handling backup and structured sewer losses. So the claims, the claim number was a lot higher than that. It would be in the 800 figure, 850 figure, sometimes nine. But with that taken out, that is really representative and, and to me remarkably the same in terms of the overall number. So, questions?
Questions?
Yeah. How do we compare to other jurisdictions? Do you work for more than Sacramento County?
We do. We do.
Do you have any that are of similar size that you could compare us to for number of claims?
Paul Height's done some research on that and he'll address you on that.
Good afternoon. My name is Paul Height. I'm the Risk and Loss Control Division Manager, otherwise known as the Risk Manager. And your question had to do with how do we compare with other entities? In the report, we provided some trend information regarding claims and how we compared, I believe it was with five other entities. As you know, we're a member of the Excess Insurance Authority. I requested data from them on a comparative basis so I could produce this information. I did ask that they redact the other, the names of the other entities, but you can see by the population and also by the payroll that there's some sizable counties in there, also a sizable city. In terms of the, what I'm looking at and what the Excess Insurance Authority is looking at is the comparative loss ratio. And that's over a 10-year period. And that compares the premiums that our county paid as well as those other entities that are on this chart with the losses. And as you can see, our loss ratio is 180%. And it's the highest of those other entities. We were not the highest. There were some that were higher, but they were much smaller entities. So we basically took those out of the mix. In terms of what's driving the, our losses and our loss ratio?
I'm sorry, could you pause for a minute?
Yes.
It says, if I'm looking at the right page, it says 10-year trended loss ratio. Is that what you were talking about?
Yes.
What does that mean?
What it means is...
What's a loss ratio?
Okay. The loss ratio is a comparison of the premiums that each of those entities paid, including the county of Sacramento, and the incurred losses. So when we have a loss ratio of 180%, it's in essence saying that for each dollar premium that we paid, there was $1.80 of losses. And that's adverse. And liability, a normal range would be somewhere around 40 to 60%. And it's being driven by some large losses that we had over that 10-year period.
Okay. Well, it's, I'm looking at these other counties, I, in a city, I guess they're all not that far off in population. I guess, what can you extrapolate from that? I mean, maybe if you took out these large losses that you're referring to?
It would make...
Are we about the same?
It would make us, well, our numbers would substantially go down. For instance, last year, our loss ratio was about 80, I think, 84, 85%. So it was less than half of what it is for the current period of time.
So are these losses that we've actually paid or, or could they be on appeal or something like that?
They're both paid and some are still open.
Okay. So some we don't know the answers to, but they are included in the percentage?
Correct. But we have to include the incurred, the incurred values of those claims that are open still.
Okay. And I'm sorry, what, what does total collection mean?
That, those are the premiums for the 1920 policy year. And our premium was $3,319,000. And then some of the other ones you'll see are much higher. But some of those, some of those entities, while they have lower loss ratios, they also have different loss exposures. For instance, some of them are running hospitals and other types of facilities that are very high risk. And therefore, their premiums reflect that.
Hmm. So the two that are, have a $13 and $14 million premium, those would be...
They, they would be running...
With hospitals in it?
Yes, they would be.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Supervisor Natoli?
Yeah, Paul, just kind of following along, same being the questioning, in that chart, there are different self-retentions and we've been at $2 million for quite some time. So what, have we looked at the cost of, you know, because again, that's the other thing taken into account here is that, you know, if you sell anything, anything under $2 million, we're paying it all, right? We, the county, we, we self-insure that amount. In other cases, at least in two of them, county one and county three by comparison, they have a million dollar loss and then their insurance kicks in. So I know that as our carrier and certainly a claims adjuster that we look at that. But I guess particularly in light, recognizing some big losses put us, you know, you know, double, if not triple or quadruple what other comparative counties or cities are, you know, are on the hook for. So have we, in recent times, examined what it would be to go to a million dollar deductible? Would it be cost prudent or unwise?
Yes. Each year, when we, when we submit our application, we ask for multiple proposals with a whole range up to, I think, I've gone up to $5 million. And in our opinion, it's not cost effective to go down to a million based on our loss history. I think the excess carriers are going to price accordingly. So what would happen is we'd be trading dollars. We might get a lower SIR, but they are going to make up the difference in the premium. So the premium would substantially go up.
Okay. So our premium, in answering Supervisor Peters' question, so 3.3 million, that's our, that's our premium?
Yes.
So we paid 3.3 million to basically $23 million in coverage, up to 25 million.
25 million.
In most occurrences, I guess, are some specialties we buy. But how much do we pay out on the $2 million piece of that, of all those losses? What's our self-insured portion of that?
What were the losses that we paid out?
Yeah, or on the hook for it, that gets to $2 million or under, so.
I, I'm sorry, I don't have that data readily available. I can produce it, but I'd have to run some reports.
Any just wild guess on what that would be? Because that includes everything, including the $5,000, you know, you know, trip and all that. But I mean, all the way up to $2...
Pothole claims and everything else that fall there. We have a substantial number of claims that, that fall under the SIR, but I, I couldn't give you a dollar amount. We only have, we only have a handful of claims that exceed the SIR. So that's, that's part of that equation right there. Very few go over the SIR. We have a number of claims, I believe in our closed session, we talked about this. We have a number of claims that are within the SIR, but they're still substantial. But it might be 20 or 30 claims that are going to be, say, above the $50,000 level all the way up to the SIR or higher.
So on the charts that Randy spoke to where, well, those are fees and payments, I guess, I guess it would be, again, if it didn't require a lot of extra work, but to have a chart that shows, you know, because in, in looking at this 180%, that includes the big, what we're going to self-insure, but we're also going to have, we have some potential liability outside of the $25 million of excess coverage. But I guess to know what we're paying out in any given year, I don't say annually because it's any given year. So we get a premium of 3.3 million and some change. And then on the other side of that equation, for all claims that have been settled, you know, what we basically get paid out. And then we have this exposure beyond that for cases that either under appeal or that we paid out, they'd be, I guess, to get us some idea of what as a county, we're paying out on, on an annual basis, year to year. Because we're self-insured and that's how we do business. And that's the most cost-effective way, as you've just pointed out. And I know we've been at $2 million. But do you know what that number is? And maybe that number's rarely identifiable. But I think, to put it in the perspective, and you responded to the question I said Supervisor Peters asked, but I think it may put the perspective, it's just, it would come with the, the normal costs are of, you know, serving a population of a million and a half people and all the exposures you have relative to liability and, you know, a personal injury and things that go with, you know, having a workforce of 12,000 people and so forth. So if you, that's something, I, I think that would be of interest, at least it would be to this board member, so.
Would you like to see a report produced just to that or included in next year's report to the board?
Well, if you have a number, it's easy. I think certainly you get a report coming, you know, back to us, you can respond to us.
I think if we can produce it, we'll get it. We'll get you something.
But I think annually, that'll be a part of it too, because I think it may help put some perspective. Yeah.
Understood.
And I think I might have the answer to your question about the cases over $2 million. Because in the report on page five, it says that according to the excess carrier, we've had six claims above the $2 million SIR within the last 10 years and one last year. I think, does that, was that the question?
Well, yeah.
I mean, the first, the first question?
Yeah, it does. Yeah, the answer, yeah. So that gives you the numbers and it kind of goes to the exposure on the 180... So that gives you the numbers, and it kind of goes to the exposure on the 180% this year, but I, I think that then, you know, what is that number that we go from year to year that actually is the one that we're paying, so...
Right. I can produce that report.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Lisa.
Are there any other questions?
Any other questions? Nope, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so your nominations, item 50. Can I just have that?
Yep.
All right. You're continuing to September 10th, the Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board. You're continuing to October 8th, the Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council. And for your matters today, we have the Disability Advisory Commission. Mr. Kennedy?
Chiefs recommend nominating Calvin Cassidy and waiving the process.
Second.
Unanimous vote. And we have the Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council. Mr. Serna?
Please continue to September 24th.
Okay. Public Health Advisory Board, Mr. Kennedy?
I've always wanted to say this, Chiefs recommend nominating Michael Jordan.
Sacramento County Mental Health Board, Ms. Peters?
Please continue to September 10th.
And Mr. Natoli?
Can I continue to September 24th, please?
Okay. And we have the Sacramento County Youth Commission, Mr. Kennedy?
Continue to September 10th.
Mr. Natoli?
September 24th. We don't have any applicants. We're trying to get out to the schools with some information, so give us another month, please.
Sacramento Environmental Commission, Mr. Kennedy?
Continue to September 10th.
And Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission, Mr. Kennedy?
Continue to September 24th.
Mr. Natoli?
Uh, September 10th, please.
Sheriff's Outreach Community Advisory Board, Mr. Serna?
Please continue to October 8th.
Okay, and then Ms. Peters?
I'm nominating the reappointment of Douglas Haland.
Okay, Supervisor Frost?
I nominate Michael Martel.
And Mr. Natoli?
Nominate the incumbent, Bill Cardoza.
And that concludes your nominations.
Thank you very much. At this point, does the county executive have any comments?
Nope.
Members of the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just a question on item 55, information item about contracts and so forth. And just by way of reference, I know there's kind of short titles on these, but under the contracts, we are now referring to work at the main jail, is the main jail new tower? Is that the new reference, that we're gonna be calling whatever we're gonna do over there? Because that's what's called out here on the chart. So I didn't know that we determined that yet, but that's what the contract says it was for. Not to build it, but for consulting services, so...
I'll have to look into, if they're saying a name.
It was, you mean, they're calling the, the new facility over here? Or our triple C here?
No, here, yeah.
Yeah, so we don't want to call it that.
Exactly. But that's what's called out here on the chart, so...
Thank you, Don.
Okay, good, thanks. Yeah, that's...
Yeah, we're not calling it that.
No, okay, all right, thanks.
Any other questions, comments? You're adjourned.